So excited to be here. Can I say hello?
Hi.
Castards. Get all these castards. Okay, I think we can roll. Okay, we'll call the meeting to order and we can stand for the flag salute. Okay, before we do the roll call real quick, we've addressed this audio recording of these meeting issues and just remind all the board members, these mics have been enhanced, but they don't speak out yet. They go to the recording so they can more accurately reflect it whenever you look on the website for the county board, you can recall that. And the last meeting in December has been archived in there, so it is logged in and so that's fully accessible to you. And in the future, hopefully by next meeting, we don't know, is that they'll be speakered out, so it's much easier for people in the back to hear that way. So we're working on improvements and actually thanks to that, the IT team, they're clipping along pretty fast, so just hang in there, we're almost there, put it that way. Okay, so roll call please. Here.
Present.
Here.
Here.
Present.
Okay, thank you all. Inspirational reading.
Good afternoon, everybody. As we begin a new year, we reaffirm our commitment to creating safe and supportive school environments for every student in Fresno County. Every child deserves a place where they can focus on learning, free from fear or anxiety, knowing their well-being is at the heart of everything we do. Dr. Martin Luther King once said, "The function of education is to teach one to think intensively and to think critically. Intelligence plus character, goal of true education." Guided by these words, we recognize that creating safe nurturing environments is essential to helping students develop both the intelligence and character that Dr. King envisioned. Let us approach this new year with a renewed sense of purpose and collaboration as we work to build a brighter future for every student who walks onto our campus.
Thank you, Gina. Next is our student representative, Jacob Cabazos from CTEC.
Well, welcome back. Happy New Year. It's nice to see you all again. CTEC has returned back to school this week, this previous Tuesday. Next week is CTEC's winter formal. The theme is based off of the board game Candy Land and will be located on campus. Also that same weekend, we will be having some students, myself included, who will be participating in the regional competitions for Skills USA, covering several of the skills learned at CTEC. Lastly, CTEC's renewal petition is completed and should be in your hands at the next board meeting. We are excited for the opportunity for you to see all the amazing things CTEC students have accomplished since its opening.
Thank you. Okay, Chair, entertain a motion for adoption of the agenda.
So moved. I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please. Yes.
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 Okay, Chair, entertain a motion for approval of the minutes for last meeting of December 21.
With approval.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call. Yes.
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 Now we move on to Employee of the Month. Jennifer?
Well, I have mentioned before that this is one of my favorite parts of this job is to honor these Employee of the Month, and this today is extra fun because we have two. We were backtracking a little bit and highlighting our December Employee of the Month and then also our January. So it is with pleasure and honor that we honor Rachel Miller, Content Coordinator in Teacher Development, as the December 2024 Employee of the Month. Rachel consistently demonstrates exceptional drive, enthusiasm, and commitment to her team and organization. She gives 100% to everything she does while maintaining a positive attitude that uplifts those around her. Rachel's ability to be the team cheerleader motivates and inspires everyone, creating an uplifting work environment that fosters collaboration and success. Rachel approaches every task with great intention and thoughtfulness. She meticulously plans every step to ensure success of her team. One of her greatest strengths is the ability to explain the reasoning behind systems and procedures, offering valuable context that helps others understand the how and the why of their work. She approaches every challenge with grace and determination and is never content with the status quo. As a result, the educators she supports always receive the best. Rachel is also a giver in her department. She has an extraordinary memory of program logistical elements and the personal stories of the teachers she serves. She is an active listener, always willing to set aside her tasks and lend a supportive hand. Her selflessness, positive spirit, and sense of humor brighten her team daily. Congratulations.
So, welcome, everyone. It's always so much fun to see standing room only in our board meeting, and it's a testament to the incredible people we're celebrating here today. So, Rachel, I'm so pleased to be able to start off. You remember, I'll say a few words, we'll affirm you by their board, then we'll give you a chance to say a few words and introduce your family. So I'm going to preemptively say, fun fact, she's a mom of three boys, and it looks like we have all three of them here. And then I'm just going to say, we are better for you. When I think about all of the things we do in service of our school districts and our charter schools, and I realize that the most important thing we do is develop our teachers and make them effective and extraordinary at what they do in our classrooms, you are the first step of that. You oversee our induction program. Again, it takes a lot of energy, so that three boys reference, really, we're proud of you and we're grateful. By the way, I know that you're part and a very significant part of a really extraordinary team, so I'm happy to see Nanjeet and her team members here as well. What you do for teacher development is incredible. In fact, you have established a reputation across the state of California, so thank you. Your regular job would be enough, but you go above and beyond, and I'm proud to say that you and your team have done such an extraordinary job in two particular areas that are way above and beyond. Let me first say, though, that with your core responsibilities, it's only been a couple years that we only had 100 teachers in our induction program, and today we have 500. So 500 teachers, 300 coaches, you span and influence far beyond Fresno County, and we are very, very proud. On Team CSF, I mentioned a little bit above and beyond. You recognize that teams must be strong, and so you have, and the team have developed a, I'm sorry, I want to say seven habits of, thank you. Another Stephen Covey good thing to do. Anyways, the speed of trust work is so critical for building teams and making sure that we're effective as we work together as a team. And I know that you have taken that skill, that training, which requires a lot of diplomacy and sensitivity and skill, and you've taken it outside even of our office to make other teams strong. So can't thank you enough for that work. It is legacy work. And then finally, when our office said equity is a value, you and your team said, well, let's go learn more about that. And I know that you put enormous numbers of hours of your private and personal lives into the training necessary, and you even have fancy credentials from UCLA to show that it's not just something we talk about, we actually have some backing, and we're very, very good at this work. So, thank you for all that you do.
Go ahead.
I'll start, sure. Thank you, thank you, thank you. We all know that the most influential people in our students' lives outside of their family and caregivers are our teachers. And a testament of a teacher's good work is how the students perform. So the link in between is how prepared our teachers are, and that would not happen without you and the rest of your team as the critical, critical bridge to make sure that what's expected of students occurs in the classroom. So thank you so much to both you and your team for this valuable work that impacts so many of our kids. Thank you for being a model for all of us. Thank you.
I'm sure. So, you know, I started this morning having a conversation with my mom because I was going to be part of a press conference and in talking about my experience in school and my teachers and one of my teachers that I had in second grade. So if you know a little bit about my story, I didn't speak English until I was about eight years old, but I had a teacher who would spend the recess time with me to go over English and all of these different things. And because of her, you know, I was able to then transfer to an all-English class and then the next year go to Manchester Gate and, you know, I am where I am today because of her. And I think, you know, our teachers really do go above and beyond, and you're a testament of that. And oftentimes, they aren't recognized, and so I'm happy to see that you are being recognized for going above and beyond and to know that, you know, when you see your kiddos get to college and do all these amazing things for their community, that, you know, you were a part of that success and that, you know, you made a difference in their lives. So thank you so much for all the work that you do.
So we'll continue with ladies first. Go ahead, Kimberly.
Oh, Brian, go ahead. That's right.
Yeah, and so I'll say thank you, Rachel. I think the one thing that kind of picked up that wasn't in here was it said you're overseeing the teacher induction program. I think it's important for people to recognize that it's not the easiest transition from student/teacher to full-time classroom teacher. It's the supports that you provide to the teacher so that they don't, you know, get very frustrated during those initial years. And I think unfortunately, we lose a lot of people who become teachers within the first five years of them becoming a teacher because they don't have adequate supports. So I say thank you for providing those supports to them and encouraging them in their career choice so that they do stay within the field and that we don't lose the valuable training that we've put into the people and the hard work that they've done to get to where they are and that, you know, people to recognize really that it's really the support you have when you come into a new job that really make that job bearable and make that job so you can figure it out. Having someone who can, as it says here, can kind of break those down into the why, not just you do it because you do it, you know, but there's a lot of things that I'm sure teachers do. My wife teaches special ed that sometimes I just go like, I don't understand why, and she does, and I'm glad that she does. But thank you very much for giving new teachers that support so that we retain the people in the field who've dedicated so much time just to enter the field. So thank you.
Rachel, you obviously have filled the room as well as our other honorees, but it's a testament to your character, your talent, and obviously your leadership skills. My mother is a master special ed teacher, so I grew up with a teacher. And I know the sacrifice that teachers make, not just financially, time with family, but because of the heart that you have for our students, we make those sacrifices. And your family, I had the opportunity to ride up in the elevator with your family, and it's a testament to all that you are, that you're still able to be a fantastic mom. You're serving our students in Fresno County. I can tell you're an excellent wife because your husband is right there next to you and nudging you along and encouraging you. And it takes a family, it takes a village to be successful, and your village is strong because you're strong. And we thank you for your character, for your love, for your support, for your leadership, for your guidance. Thank you for creating pathways for teachers and then keeping them and surrounding them and wrapping them up with support for success, to be able to complete the program and then to move into the classroom and support our students. So thank you so much for all that you do for all of our students in Fresno County, and you're to be commended. Thank you.
Rachel, I gleaned through here, and I don't know you personally, but to know is that I see, the thing that jumps out to me is your ability to explain how systems work and the reasons why we go down a certain path and the positive effects of that, so that the recipient, meaning the teacher training, they totally get it. And so when they have ownership in it, that's when things work. And I mean, that's certainly true in medicine. You can't just say, we're doing this, you have to explain why. But it's also true in business and school districts, basically, we're in the business of education. And my friend Matty Matoian here certainly agree with me that you explain something to employees and they tell them why, why we're doing this, what, you don't have to do it again. They understand completely. Mr. Matoian, by the way, owner and retired CEO of OK Produce, and you'll find out why he's here soon. But the point is, the parallels are the same. And I really do appreciate that you go through that effort because that greatly enhances your outcome, and that's what it's all about, is what's best for the kids. And so, yeah. That's a good idea. We were getting to that. Yeah, otherwise I'm pointing to everybody in the room. But anyway, thank you for that because that's, and I assume you'll let us know about your team and all that.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So, thank you.
On everyone listening livestream to be able to hear you, so there's your mic.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Kofer, and thank you to our board members for this recognition. It has truly been an honor to serve in this organization specifically supporting new teacher development and growth the last 12 years. Although today I am being recognized, I attribute so much of this honor to my village that has supported me, both personally and professionally. My husband Jared has been my biggest cheerleader and support, sacrificing throughout our marriage because of the belief he has had in me and the work our team is accomplishing at FCS S. Our boys, Luke, Liam, and John, they have shown patience and understanding when they've had to sacrifice time with me because of my work commitments. Boys, I'm talking to you right now. Your support and encouragement in me being a working mom means so much to me. My parents have instilled a strong work ethic and heart for serving others in me and have been consistent in showing up for our family however they can, and I'm so grateful. And next, my HR and teacher development family who are all over. I'm so grateful that I get to come to a place where I find joy and drive in working alongside you, that this team works so incredibly hard using each other's giftings and strengths to be as innovative and impactful as possible in serving our teachers, students, and organization while also simultaneously caring deeply for one another. Again, what a gift this is. And to my leadership, we're kind of all so scattered around. One in particular, you are incredible leaders and have inspired and supported me to thrive in my work. You've modeled how to lead with integrity, grace, and high levels of trust, while equally, if not more important, you've uplifted my role as a wife and a mother. Words really can't describe that type of care and support. Ultimately, I give thanks to God for his faithfulness and the work he's accomplished in my life and that he's continuing to do. He continues to provide peace and wisdom in both the hills and the valleys, and truly he deserves the honor. In closing, I am so blessed to be a part of this organization and work along so many other amazing individuals and departments that are supporting students, teachers, school sites, districts, and the organization. Many of you have probably heard the saying, "We rise by lifting others."
Yeah.
And I'm proud to say that I see this lived out every day. Thank you.
Beautiful.
We'll take a few pictures here and then we'll.
Congratulations.
With family.
Well said.
Beautiful job. Beautiful job.
Okay, thank you very much. Now we'll move on to our next Employee of the Month.
All right, moving on to our January 2025 Employee of the Month. It is with pleasure that we honor Marissa Gamboa, Executive Leadership Coach in Regional Community Schools as the January 2025 Employee of the Month. Marissa is a standout team member dedicated to fulfilling job responsibilities with a remarkable commitment to going above and beyond the call of duty. Her approach is not just about meeting expectations but embracing creative and thoughtful mindset. She has spent countless hours building her knowledge about community schools, and as a result, her team and those she serves count on her knowledge and creative ways of thinking, I'm sorry, and creative ways of thinking about her work. Marissa consistently brings a unique and innovative perspective tackling challenges with unconventional yet practical solutions. What truly sets her apart is her thoughtfulness in every endeavor. She not only stays current on the ever-changing work but does so in a way that considers the broader impact on her team and organization. She shows genuine care for the well-being of her team and a commitment to fostering a positive work environment. Marissa is more than an exemplary team member, she is a creative force consistently injecting fresh ideas, perspectives, and a thoughtful approach in her work. Congratulations.
So pleased to be able to start our comments. I've known you a long time and called you a friend. I've always been so impressed. But I really. a friend. I've always been so impressed. But I really enjoyed during the holiday time, you and I were the only two people in this building, and you invited me to a private luncheon in your office with your homemade pizzole. And together, I got to learn even more about your beautiful family, about your journey with us in this office, and I love your story. The fact that you spent so many years in alternative ed, loving on and raising up and redirecting our kids that maybe made mistakes and found their way into our school. And then when we, the call was made, we said we need to pull together this remarkable group of educators from all different corners of our office and in the community to build community schools and make this transformative work take place. You stepped up, and we have this remarkable team that goes all over the county, all over the region, and dare I say, possibly all over the state to make a difference, and it's going to make a huge difference for kids. Once again, I just am so grateful about your journey, the fact that you understand exactly what it takes to prevent a kiddo from finding their way to a court and community school, and the fact that you are an incredible part of this community schools team. Our team often focuses on into Fresno schools and Fresno County schools, but you stretch way out north mostly, right? And then so you make sure that our brand, our FCSS, team quality, if you will, and expertise and talent are well-known and frankly, somewhat prioritized because we want more kids to be supported well through this community schools transformative opportunity, and we do that beautifully. Thank you. Thank you so very much. Congratulations.
Marcy almost starts. Thank you so much. Marissa, you know, the transition from day-to-day working with kids at a school site to doing bigger, broader work, developing professionals and community contacts and creating systems of support in communities, really takes an understanding of not only our kids, but our families and our communities and our people. And for you to have made that huge leap at such an opportune time, had you have been challenging, just on a personal basis, but it's refreshing that perhaps, you know, I made many mid-year, midlife career changes, and you know, this is a career change for you to the extent that from tight to broader is a big deal. And you're coming out, coming through louder and clearer and focused on what it is that not only you need to do, but how our school systems can help improve, serve our families and our communities. Because a school is such a central part to our lives and our student lives. And in many of our little communities, the school is the one and only institution that they know in essence. And so, the work that you've done and the transition that you've made is just really remarkable and commendable. And thank you for being a role model for all of us. It's not an easy thing to do, to make those changes, and I really appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Okay, we'll switch it up then.
There you go.
Go ahead.
Well, I'm going to say first, are you still going to serve spaghetti with me? It's one of the highlights of the year is the spaghetti lunch. Enjoyed doing that, enjoyed small workings with you for the past four years while I've been on the board and seeing how you've been involved in coaching up those persons who are now leading our court and community schools. A lot of changes there. Us as a board being able to see the changes in attendance, the changes in students' attitudes of being in school, you know, those are direct items of yourself and those who come after you and changing those attitudes about being in those court and community schools and really being able to be that example to others of how we've had some transformative changes here within Fresno County and that we can share those best practices with others. And so, thank you for spearheading those efforts that will not only affect, you know, students here in Fresno County, but really students across the Central Valley. So, thank you.
I'll go next.
Okay.
Marissa, I just love you so much. From the first moment that I met you, my first impression was stellar. Just stellar. You just have a persona that when you step into the room, you're in charge, and everything will be well for our students because we trust you. They're entrusted to you, and you took that seriously. And with our court and community schools, we saw it. That's where I met you. And I saw your love and your compassion for our students and your extra and above efforts to make them feel cared for and seen. And the improvements you made, the extra little touches, we see you, and we have seen you, and we continue to see you, and we continue to applaud you for all of your wonderful talents and efforts that you continue to share with us here at Fresno County and with our students, and we adore you. Thank you.
Can you hear in the back? You're okay.
Okay, I'll be very short. I'm the newest one here, so I haven't had much interaction with you, but I hope, you know, we do get more time, you know, to get to know each other. But I think one of the things that stood out to me is that point of creativity about seeing things, you know, in a perspective where we meet our students where they are. And I think that's one of the things with community schools is that we're able to really see how our students' lives are impacted and therefore their education is impacted. And I think if we don't open up our minds about, like, really understanding how our students, the struggles they face every single day, and finding solutions to how to better help them through those struggles so that they can concentrate in school and be able to perform the best they can, is so critical to their success. And so, having someone like you who already is that way, who thinks outside the box, who's trying to find those solutions, it's so imperative to the work that we do, and thank you so much for everything.
Well, wait a minute, wait, wait, wait. To counter, to counter the newest one here of the other side, I'm the oldest one here in multiple ways. But can I ask, when, how long ago, how long you been with FCSS?
Yes, just over 26 years.
Okay. I've been here 24. So, she was here before me. And I remember when your children, your daughter right here was about, not much bigger than the one she's holding, and that just, but you've always been smiling, on the ball, right with it, we're helping everyone. And I've seen you move through multiple assignments with grace and intelligence and leadership qualities. That's, you're a huge asset to this quarter century that you've been here, and I very much appreciate it. You make us look good. Thank you.
Well, good afternoon, Superintendent Kofur, Board President, Dr. Allen, members of the board, and all of the families and friends who are here today. What a joy it is to hear these stories, wonderful stories about Rachel. Congratulations. I've had the opportunity to work with you for many years in different capacities, and everything that has been shared, thank you to your family. It's been wonderful. I do want to share that I have grown up with FCSS. I've had the pleasure of working in two departments, the court and community schools, now alternative education, and also with community schools, also known as California Community Schools Partnership Program. But I take my experience from over 25 years of working with our students, with our friends and colleagues at the Alternative Ed Department, and many of you in all departments who have helped me grow in many ways, and not just professionally, but personally as well. So, yes, it takes that village and the strong team behind us. I'd like to acknowledge first my mom, Della, who's seated in the front row. I get the pleasure, the blessing of, I have four generations in this room today in my family.
Beautiful.
I just want to share a little bit about my family and the support that allows me to do what I do, especially when I was raising my kids and those wonderful opportunities that they got to have along with me of what a family looks like in the workplace. So, I have endless, countless blessings. So, thank you, Mom, for helping to raise the three generations, and you're continuing to with the one that's on the way. And going next to my daughter, Sonia, my middle of my three adult children. My daughter is here today representing her two siblings. They both live out of town, but my daughter and I share some just fond memories of working with our alt-ed family, but also the current ones here too. And the really neat thing is that my current work family gets to see my home family grow, and they get to be a part of that experience. And one year, we're going to say, I remember when Rome, baby Rome was that age. And so, it's just really nice to be at this point in my career and working with each of you. And again, thank you for helping me to grow. I also have my Aunt Molly, who has joined us this afternoon. Thank you, Molly. My Aunt Molly is the oldest of my mom's siblings, and so it's, thank you for joining us here. Just some strong, strong female leaders that I've got to learn from and still continue to grow with. So, thank you for, thank you for being here. I had a great surprise also of one of my former administrators, Pam Coronado, who was here for an event earlier and said, absolutely, I'm going to stay to join. And that leads me to the 25 years before, when I started out as a substitute teacher at the court school site, and I was just wrapped with these wonderful arms of leadership. It was Pam Coronado, Ken Campbell, who gave me a chance to make an impact on the lives of the young people who so desperately need that support and are getting it. And that's the great thing. I get to hear about it. I get to see about, and I still get to do that. And that leads me to my current work team in community schools, where we bring together our experience from all that we've done in our previous districts or previous departments, and we continue to learn and grow together, and we get to bounce off these great ideas. And that includes our colleagues in the northern counties, all the way down to Kern. And we get to do that together as a team of five, and we've been able to develop the trust that it takes and allows us to do our job in the way that we do. That makes not only each other look great, but FCSS. And so, yes, we're very proud to do the work that we are doing. So, I want to give a special recognition also to my work team, my work family here. Dave, Charles, Angie is at a personal commitment that she could not get out of. But Gina, I know what the day-to-day looks like for you, and I want to say thank you for taking the time to say, yes, I'm going to take that time to write up not just a nomination, but it was a beautiful recognition, and it was almost like a love story. Thank you for that, Gina. And it was just beautiful. So, thank you for letting me learn and grow with all of you, and I appreciate the work from 25 years ago to our current work together. And thank you for your work in supporting students.
You can see, she just grabbed that mic and went to town.
Down, sit down.
We've got to get the seal behind us. Move over to the right. Move to the right. Okay, now, thank you very much. So, now we'll move on to another fun aspect of the meeting, and that's the Superintendent January Superstar.
It is our absolute honor to recognize, yes, is our January Superintendent Superstar. Riley is in eighth grade at Rayford Johnson Junior High School in the Kingsburg Elementary Charter School District. As this year's Star Student Award recipient for her school, she possesses a heart full of resilience and a radiant spirit. Her journey through middle school has been anything but easy. Riley has risen above, continually inspiring her peers, teachers, and community with her strength and determination. Riley is known for her cheerful disposition and unwavering commitment to embodying her school's core values of patience, integrity, justice, humanity, and courage. She is a source of light in her school, always greeting her classmates with a smile and offering support to those in need. She demonstrates patience in her interactions, integrity in her actions, a keen sense of justice in her kindness to others, and humanity through her empathy. Above all, Riley's courage is undeniable. She faces each day with an open heart and a willingness to overcome all obstacles. In the classroom, Riley strives to be the best she can be, pushing herself academically and personally. Her work ethic and positive outlook makes her a role model to her classmates, proving that strength and joy can coexist even in the face of adversity. As a Star Student, Riley represents the values of determination that will surely carry her to great success in high school and beyond. Congratulations.
All right. First, I would like to thank the board for giving me this chance to win this amazing award. And I would also like to take this time up here to thank a few of my amazing role models and just overall people that have supported me throughout everything. First, I would like to thank Ms. Lee for running the amazing school that I go to day-to-day, that I wake up every morning and at least learn something in every class called Rayford Johnson Junior High. I would also like to thank a family friend who I call my Aunt Francie. She always, whenever I see her, puts a smile on my face and just cheers me up whenever I'm sad. I would also like to thank my father, who has dealt with me for the past 13 years of my life, and encouraged me to be the best that I can be every day. I would also like to thank one of personally my, bleh, sorry, one of the most important people in my life, my mother, who unfortunately has passed on. But I would like to mention her because she has taught me personally to be the person that I am today. Don't let anyone hover me up and put me down just to be the, I guess, the firework in the sky, as you could say. And I would just thank you again for this amazing opportunity.
We'll go ahead and say a few things, and then I'd love to hear Superintendent Wes Sever, who is here with us. So glad to have him in our presence. And we have Principal Ms. Lee with us, and she's moved, so we're going to give her a chance to recover for a second because that's how I am a lot of times. I need a moment. Riley, we're so proud to be able to honor you. When we departed from our normal practice, because we wanted to make sure that Riley told her story rather than me telling her story. And so, I'm really glad that you were able to tell us a little bit about why you were such a standout and why your district honored you. Because the fact that you lost your mother and you were able to show such a joy coming to school and being part of your community was a strong example for others that might encounter some sort of challenge or obstacle to their success in the future. I know your mom would be very, very proud. I just want to say that Kingsburg is a very special place because Riley told me in our conversation that when she came home one day, she told her dad, Dad, they're pouring so much love on me, I might even need a little bit of a break. That is a testament to the kind of educators and friends and leaders you have, and you're a very special community. We're so pleased to be able to honor you today. Just a moment, we're all going to say a few words of appreciation about you, and then we're going to introduce you to Mr. Maddy Matoyan, who is going to be able to take a picture with us and put something very special in your hands. So, we'll stay tuned for that for just a second. Once again, I'm so proud to honor you as our 2025, January 2025, Superstar of the Month. Congratulations.
So, a couple of things that stood out to me is a few words that are in here. Kindness to others, humility, empathy, and willingness to overcome obstacles. If those are things that you can employ throughout your life... If those are things that you can employ throughout your life, there's really nothing that can hold you back from anything that you want to accomplish. That's why I say there's some very key, key things that are in there. I like that it's kindness is the first one. If we can't be kind to each other, that's a, that's a big problem. I often say someday each one of us will be in our workplace and our work, our fellow work people become like our family members. Likewise, some of our schoolmates become our family members. You know, my closest friends are from elementary school even, even till this day. And being able to extend that empathy, that humility, that kindness, and be able to get through difficult times in your life, that those are people that you can rely on for the rest of your life and that they can rely upon you. So, thank you for being an example to other students on your campus of, of just, not just showing empathy, but being able to receive empathy and receive assistance from other people. Because sometimes receiving kindness from others is one of the hardest things that we have to do, because we have to show that we're vulnerable. So, thank you for demonstrating that to other students.
Riley, you are just such a delight. And yes, you are that firecracker in the sky. You just zoo, just joy, happiness, you're just a little angel floating around. I see it, just the presence. Integrity, that's what stood out for me. That's my word. I stand on integrity. If you stand on your integrity, if you stand for something, you'll never fall for anything else. Stand. You are standing. And you're standing so beautifully, so bright with your authentic self. And I love it. Continue being you. No one else, because no one else is like you, right? They're all trying to be like you, the firecracker in the sky. Continue to shine bright. You can do anything you want to do. You can be anyone, anything, any title, it's limitless. Whatever you want to do, you can accomplish it. We're so proud of you. Continue to shine bright and be the best that you can be. And Dad, what a wonderful father you are. Just a wonderful, loving father, supportive, steadfast, amazing. And the village, thank you so much. This is what we need. We wrap around our students that need that extra. That's what, that's what our service is for. And thank you so much. You are to be commended today. Thank you.
Riley, I am so proud of you, and I know your mom was an amazing person, and she created another amazing person. I mean, just the fact that the clarity and ease you had in speaking to this whole room full of people, you've done better than I have, and I'm just so enamored by your skills and abilities and your heart and your soul and your determination and all of those things. And I'm, I know that these days, schools and communities get, sometimes get the bad rap, that they're not always kind to each other. But I know this part of the community, you know, Kingsburg is part of my area, and I know that Kingsburg pulls together and Kingsburg supports all of their families and all of their kids, the school district but beyond. And you are so lucky to be part of a community like that. And we are so grateful to all of your community for uplifting you and making sure that you're doing what you want to do. And I just applaud you and I am grateful to your, your family, your dad, what amazing person, thank you so much. Principal Superintendent Sever, thank you so much, because it takes all of us to support each other. And so, I just can't wait to see what's next for you, because I'm sure you're going to end up with some massive dream of a, a life and a career that you want to have beyond your K-12 education, and I want to hear about it when you come back.
Come back and report back to us.
So Riley, don't ever change. Don't ever change. You're such an amazing person. You know, from a perspective of a mom, and I'm raising two, two little ones right now. And I think our biggest thing right now is, oh, when our kids go to school, are they going to be loved? Are they going to be cared for? I'm raising a little boy that's very unique, and you remind me a lot of my son. And a lot of times I'm like, is he going to be accepted with the way that he thinks? And he's so smart and just, you know, some of the questions he has and, you know, the, the biggest fear is that some of his light is going to be dim because of what he may encounter with other kiddos. And so I hope that, you know, you continue being the way that you are, because you really are making an impact with your fellow, you know, students. And that means there's kiddos that, you know, are going to school and feeling safe because you're there and feeling welcome because you're there. And I really hope my, my kiddos encounter, you know, kids like you. And, and so don't ever change and continue being who you are and know that you're making a big difference. So, thank you.
Riley, first thing I want to say is thank you for representing a charter school to a county board that is probably the most charter-friendly board in the state. So, we, we do appreciate that. And secondly, leading by example. And she, you don't have to say anything, you just lead by example. And she showed that here today. She was flawless, spot-on with her delivery, and not one note. I don't know if you noticed that, but not one note, all right off. So, just keep that up, keep that up, that will take you far. So, don't let up on your dreams, keep pushing forward, and you'll hear silly criticism from silly people. Don't ever worry, just go, just keep focusing forward and you'll do fine. And yes, I echo one of the other board members, we would like to hear from you later on in life, just drop an email and just let us know what you're doing. We would love to get the feedback on that. So, anyway, and thank you for nominating her and having her come here too. We really appreciate that. Congratulations.
Superintendent Sever, would you like to say anything?
First of all, I want to thank everybody up on the board, as well as Dr. Kofer for, oh, and I'm sorry, I, I would like to thank, what was, how do I pronounce the name?
Mr. Matoyan.
Matoyan. Mr. Matoyan, thank you so much for the opportunity and for honoring students in our community. We really appreciate what you've done and what a blessing it is for Riley. But I do want to mention a few words about Riley. You heard what I had written about Riley, but Riley, I want you to know what a pillar of strength you are on our campus at Rafer Johnson. You are a true leader, and you do it with such finesse and such charisma through some of the most difficult, trying times that I know you'll ever face in your entire life. And I want you to know and understand that you are leading not only your peers, but your teachers as well as me. I see you every day and you inspire me to give my all and to give my best and to do better every single day, just by you being you. So, thank you for that. And I'm going to pass it on to Dr. Sever to me.
Beautiful.
I just want to, as I walked into this room, I want, into this building, I want to say I had a great experience. Ms. Kofer brought us into her office and spent time with Riley and her father and got to know her. Thank you for putting kids first and doing that. That meant, meant a lot. The Fresno County School Board, you guys are awesome. You make everybody feel so good. And your comments, oh my gosh, this is like an amazing day for Riley, and we appreciate that. I just want to give it up and thank, first of all, Kingsburg and the teachers from Riley. I asked Riley who her favorite teacher was, and she named three people. I'm like, oh, that makes me feel so good, because in Kingsburg, we want everybody to feel like there's a caring adult that loves and appreciates them and makes them feel safe at school. And so that is incredible. I got to get a little emotional, but when we were in with Mrs. Kofer, Superintendent Kofer, Riley's dad shared that when Riley's mom passed away, he asked her, hey, it's okay to miss school. And Riley, and he shared that Riley said, my mom wants me to go to school, so I'm going. And that's the type of character that Riley has, and that's the type of person that she is. She learns from others, she's an example to me and to other students and to her, to her teachers and her community at large. And so, thank you, Riley, for being here and receiving this award. You are awesome. Thank you very much.
Riley, we'll have a picture with you and me, and then with you, me, and Mr. Matoyan, and then with, okay? This is the coolest shirt ever. This is Mr. Matoyan to give you. You ready?
Oh my God. Did you tell her about the, what's in the envelope?
Did you tell her what's in the envelope?
This is for you.
What's in the envelope is a nice fat check for her future education. So, anyway, that's it. We're going to, we're going to break for recess now. The board will reconvene at 2:35. Refreshments are outside.
Rachel, we'd love to get pictures with your thing, if you'd like to use the place when we begin.
Busy kind of troubleshooting.
Good afternoon, members of board. President Clyde, Superintendent Kofor. So excited to have Amy with us. Thank you Superintendent Kofor for recognizing the importance of the position. One thing that we know is that staff and students perform their best when they feel safe. And so elevating and having a person dedicated to that in our organization, I think, is a huge step forward. Amy is going to do great work for us in the two months that she's been here. We're already making progress. So I'll let Amy speak just real briefly about what she's working on.
Thank you so much for having me. I'm so excited to be in this position where I get to bring together my passion of education and safety and have the opportunity to impact the community and our children. And the work that I do within our office, I know has a ripple effect through our community. And so just really making sure that we do our best work in our comprehensive school safety plans, our workplace violence prevention program, our IIPP, which is Injury Illness Prevention Plan, the Safety Committee and other initiatives that I have big dreams of that will come down the road. And I know Dr. Kofor has some great visions for safety within our organization. And I'm excited to take on some of those and really make those visions come to life. So thank you for having me and I'm excited to be in this position.
Thank you. Okay, now we'll move on for the Williams compliance effort. Jennifer.
Hello, good afternoon, Dr. Clyde, Superintendent Kofor and members of the board. So I am here for our second quarter Williams Act report. And so this is the one, and we're going back now. I was here in November for our whole county schools. This now represents if there's any complaints for the schools that we oversee. And so I am pleased to say, and by the way, complaints are specific to teacher misassignments, textbook insufficiency and any facility complaints. That's specifically what Williams is about. And so I'm pleased to say that we have had no complaints during this quarter about our schools.
Bravo. I'm just going to make a comment. I'm pleased to see that you've got, we've got other people other than just us that are able to hear your report this time. Because oftentimes the room is empty by the time it gets to you. So they're here for you, I'm sure.
And then following Riley, by the way, I don't have to speak after her. It's like a tough act.
But I want to thank you for keeping up the Williams compliance effort. First of all, we have to. But secondly, is that it just enforces to keep the school books in the class. This is where all this got started. Not having the class school books and the schools in repair, water fountains working, you know, that kind of thing. And teachers teaching the correct subjects as their assignments. If we didn't have you doing this, I could, it's just human, I would see things start to slide. So anyway, keep up the good work. Appreciate it. Okay, now we'll move on to Kepler.
All right. Good afternoon, President Dr. Clyde, Vice President Dr. Masamoto, trustees, Superintendent Kofor and cabinet. The matter of I three is a wonderful step forward for you as a county board along with the county superintendent as it relates to the county board's authorization of charters. As a team, we are a state leader in charter authorizing. Some of you have heard that up and down the state and I've heard that up and down the state. But today starts a series of charter school annual updates where you will hear from charter school leaders as well as receive a brief report describing charter school enrollment, student outcomes and fiscal information composed by FCSS team members. The Kepler Charter Board Report includes Kepler enrollment trends over the past five years, four years of California dashboard outcomes in English Language Arts, mathematics, chronic absenteeism, suspensions, English learner and English learner progress. At a glance, highlights may include, highlights include but may not be limited to, and I emphasize that, schoolwide and student group improvements in English Language Arts, as noted on page four, mathematics, which is on page five of the report. 2024 dashboard outcomes moved Kepler from low performing status where they were for 20, the 22 and 23 school year because of their improvements in math and particularly in the Hispanic student group and the socio-economically disadvantaged student group. Their significant improvements moved them, based on the 2024 dashboard, out of the low performing charter list into the middle performing charter list. So that's to be commended.
Bravo. Yes, yes, yes. Come on, that's right. Let's give it to them.
That's good.
And so basically, we're talking move them out of the COVID. That's what it amounts to.
Thank you. That's what we wanted to see.
Areas of improvement include but may not be limited to increased chronic absenteeism rates for students with disabilities and African-American students. That's noted on page five. Higher suspension rates over the past two years at a schoolwide and student group levels. Student group levels, that's noted on page six. And then there's a downward trend in enrollment over the past five years. Very important note, as you're looking at the student outcomes on this report, student groups without dashboard colors. So you have some student group scores where it's just white and it's not, there's not a dashboard color present. Those represent student groups of between 11 and 29 students. And when you have such a small number of students, you can get large fluctuations in outcomes. And for that reason, they're reported because they're important, right? Those are our kids. But they don't have dashboard colors for accountability because of that large fluctuation. Now we'll hear, as a second part of this report, and you all have probably asked for it for years. I've asked for it for years. Dr. Kofor has made it happen. And we'll hear from Superintendent Ricky Dillon from Kepler Neighborhood for a brief presentation.
Good afternoon. My name is Ricky Dillon. Good afternoon, Dr. Kofor, board of trustees. It's so, so nice to be here. It's been two years. I mean, it's been a four-year journey, five-year journey. We've been trying to just do what we need to be doing. And I'm glad to say that today is the day where we did accomplish that. And we have a long journey ahead of us. So Dr. Hunt, I wanted to thank you and the team, FCSS team, that they have been super supportive. Thank you to the board for trusting us and just redirectioning all the time and giving a strategic governance. You know, this is what you need to be doing when it comes to accountability or when it comes to just about anything. And, you know, just, and I also wanted to take it back to the FCSS coaching team. I know Rachel was earlier recognized as the employee of the month. Again, those departments are the backbone for our community. So they're there, your coaches are there, especially Mark Sosa and along with Lindsay and Megan. So, you know, they are, they are seeing us, they're, they are watching us, they're directing us and they are training our staff, which is much needed. So I wanted to start off with that. We do have a presentation with you, with, for you. We wanted to, I know it's been, it's been five years. So we wanted to just give you a little bit of highlights, what Kepler is doing, what are the plans and what are the areas of improvement? So. So we want to start with our board of directors. We've had, again, a few new people that we added. Just a little overview of who they are. We have John Dolan, he's the CEO of Fresno Chef's Zoo. And then Linda Dominguez, who's our parent. Renee, who is also the Associate Director for Fresno State Programs. Christine Nottingham, she is a member of the community. And Jaffe Hickman, who is also the Superintendent for you at JAS. Again, these are the people who guide me, who guide how things are done. And they, you know, tell me to go take a risk. Dr. Hunt has provided an overview of what Kepler has done in terms of academic achievement. As you know, ELA math, we are doing everything we possibly could. So we are growing, we are closing those gaps, especially in our certain, certain subgroups. We are also supporting our EL students. Our population has grown to 24 now. I mean, we're a small school. We have 289 kids now. As you know, there's a decline in enrollment. We've had 306, seven kids last year. We're down to 289 due to some unknown factors. And we are, but we're trying, we're trying. Where there's a nationwide decline in enrollment. So, so this is just a preview of a dashboard that we're showing you of how Hispanic kids, we grew almost about, I don't know if you can see, oh, 21 points in math. And then our state of, compared to state of California, we were in orange and now we're in yellow. Then this is a dashboard growth outlook for ELA. It's for Hispanic kids and SED. All of our, all of our subgroups are making a significant growth when it comes to academics. So we wanted to highlight this and thank, thank my team here who's here to support. They've been with us for so long. Then I wanted to focus on EL kids. As you know, we are at our schools, so we're growing. We wanted to implement a great ELD program. We've had, this is from last year, we've had 12 kids, now we have 24 kids. FCSS Charter Oversight Team, when they were there, they wanted to, they visited the classrooms and this was something we were able to showcase. We are reclassifying, some of the kids are graduating from the program. And again, the ones who are coming new, we are doing the testing. Then we also, Kepler has four Cs, which is curiosity, community, character and creativity. So we, our emphasis is on heavy community involvement. We believe that we cannot do what we do without community. So just a few of the highlights, these are our partners, Okeproduced. So we, we saw Mr. Matoyan here earlier. We work closely with Brady. So 2.4 ton of produce that we give it to kids this year for free up to, up to, in this, by December, in addition to the breakfast and lunch. So they can come and grab any sort of, any fruit, seasonal fruit that they want. If they are hungry, they don't need to ask or anything. So that's, that's what we take initiative on, that we wanted to provide. Fresno Rotary Club is our huge community support. Anytime we need a grant, they're there to support us as well. A few of this, you know, Fresno Chef's Zoo gives us an experience, 360 degree experience to us. Just about, just getting kids out of the classrooms and learning behind the scenes. Fresno State Service Learning Days, this, this is huge for us because we partner with MBA programs and undergrad programs where kids, where students of Fresno State comes to our school and then they do an analysis, swap analysis on our, on our school and on our students. And then we get to see it from a different perspective. Then we have banks. We collaborate with banks a lot. Fresno, Fresno First Bank is one of our partner. They do come to our, to our. kids, we grew almost about, I don't know if you can see, oh, 21 points in math. And then our state of, compared to state of California, we were in orange and now we're in yellow. Then this is a dashboard growth outlook for ELA, for Hispanic kids and SED. All of our, all of our subgroups are making a significant growth when it comes to academics. So we wanted to highlight this and thank, thank my team here, who's here to support is that they've been with us for so long. Then I wanted to focus on EL kids. As you know, we are at our schools, so we're growing. We wanted to implement a great ELD program. We've had, this is from last year, we've had 12 kids, now we have 24 kids. FCSS Charter Oversight Team, when they were there, they wanted to, they visited the classrooms, and this was something we were able to showcase. We are reclassifying, some of the kids are graduating from the program, and again, the ones who are coming new, we are doing the testing. Then we also, Kepler has four Cs, which is curiosity, community, character, and creativity. So we, our emphasis is on heavy community involvement. We believe that we cannot do what we do without community. So just a few of the highlights, these are our partners, OK Produce. So we, we saw Mr. Matoyan here earlier. We work closely with Brady, so 2.4 ton of produce that we give it to kids this year for free up to, up to, in this, by December, in addition to the breakfast and lunch. So they can come and grab any sort of, any fruit, seasonal fruit that they want. If they are hungry, they don't need to ask or anything. So that's, that's what we take initiative on, that we wanted to provide. Fresno Rotary Club is our huge community support. Anytime we need a grant, they're there to support us as well. A few of this, you know, Fresno Jaffe Zoo gives us an experience, 360-degree experience to us, just about, just getting kids out of the classrooms and learning behind the scenes. Fresno State Service Learning Days, this, this is huge for us because we partner with MBA programs and undergrad programs, or kids, where students of Fresno State comes to our school and then they do an analysis, swap analysis on our, on our school and on our students, and then we get to see it from a different perspective. Then we have banks. We collaborate with banks a lot. Fresno First Bank is one of our partners. They do come to our, to our middle class as an assembly, and then do, they do teach financial literacy to our kiddos, because this is something that we think that they need to know about budgeting. We also do a courier fair, again, just to invite kids or invite other companies to expose our students to different couriers. Calviva is a high, is also one of our biggest supporters. As you can see, we run a lot of community events. This is, I'm going to talk about our play yard. We did Kepler Kids Run. It's a, all of these events have been big hit. We raised, fundraised quite a bit money that oversets the cost for the play yard, the projects that we have upcoming. Winter performances are also huge for us. We're a small school, and we are a community-engaged school, so our parents, they have one-on-one, they can come and talk to us anyway, anytime. I'm also outside the, outside the door, so they can speak to me and the principals here, to them or anyone. And you can see, we have about, pretty much 80% of parents are attending these events. And we do the parent surveys as well for them, so that we can work with them when it comes to their schedule. Play yard renovation project, as you know, if those of you who've seen Kepler, we do have Waking Land. We, it's a dirt lot, and we did put a playground there, so, but it's not enough for our kids due to social, emotional learning. And also, outside play plays a huge role in, when it comes to suspensions, chronic absenteeism, and also, it's like, we should provide something to kids beyond that. They're, they should, they should be come to school, and they should be able to participate, you know, and go to recess. I mean, they do go to recess, but do other things. So it's also a green space for us as well. So we're building this project. So we're in a design phase, our board had approved it. This is, it's upcoming. We did a parent survey, all our parents want it. And this is, you'll, you'll see it in year, so we're ready to submit it to the city. Yesterday, we had a board meeting, and this in the middle is our actual plan, so you can see. Areas of improvement, like any other school, we also have things where we need to improve on. Enrollment trends, it's declining. We'd like to get more kids, but we do have either a location issue or some sort of other issues which we are running into, but we are trying to get back to the kids, to get, to tell them about our school. Gate and STEM programs, so we have been focusing on, okay, let's move the kids academically, let's do, but what, what are we doing for high achievers? So this year, we are bringing full-on program. We've had, we had a gate program, however, this year, we've been, we couldn't really kickstart it in the beginning of the year, so we're doing it, and it's actually starting on January 29th. After AB 1505, it was really difficult for charters to do out-of-box things, so, but now we're doing it, and hopefully it's, it's, we'll continue. Space is an issue. You saw our building, space limitation is another issue. Our classroom size is 15 to 20 kids. So, you know, we want to make sure one-on-one is to the kiddos. We, maximum size we want to get to, it's 22. Before COVID, we had 29. And then possible expansion to another campus, this is something we're thinking in, down the road, in five years, we want to open up another campus, and with your blessings, if, if that happens, you know, we're blessed to be part of that. And then chronic absenteeism suspensions, there's a huge, huge, huge connection with outside play. Kids right now, they're focusing so much on electronics, we want to make sure they get out, and we try to get them out, so we want to give them a space where they can look forward to. So, yes, with that being said, thank you for trusting us from all those years, and thank you, Dr. Hunt. Thank you, team and board members. We appreciate that. On behalf of our students, community and parents, we love working with you, and, you know, we just, we want to keep working with you.
I think it's something to point out that, yeah, you, we do some support for teacher development and all that kind of thing, but it's no more than usual. This isn't a school that we have to go in and take over and show them how to, how to, how to run the boat. They, they've got their act together, and so I just wanted the, the board to know that, because I'm on the charter committee. And, and I think it's really good that you're not putting off doing the outside space. That's going to run you about 1.5.
Yes.
To a million on a facility that in five years, you're kind of thinking about relocating, but that's okay, because you're spending, you've got 85% reserves here, that I see, and so you're spending today's money and today's kids, and that's what I like to see. And so I, I, I think that as long as you stick with the gate and STEM focus, don't worry about it, the kids will come to you. Especially as these scores keep going up, we'll get around, and I see good things for your future. And you're not up until 27, right?
No, 26.
Well.
Next year.
So next year, okay. So you'll be up for reboot this time next year sometime. Yeah, yeah, so we'll see you then. So, that's right, finished in 26, yeah. So anyway, congrats, you run a tight ship.
I have both a comment and that, and then a question. And the comment is from our CTEC principal saying that Kepler Charter is the largest feeder. Feeder school to CTEC.
Yes.
So I think we all should be a part of that.
Yeah, that's true.
I mean, that's a remarkable thing, and with, with STEM focus, that, that makes a lot of sense. I applaud the amazing growth on ELA and, and math, and I'm just curious, why do you think the suspensions are so much higher? Is it, is it about behavior? Is it about stricter guidelines and enforcement? Is it, you know, social factors that are impacting the behavior? What are your thoughts about that?
We do follow, we practice sort of short of justices, but then we do have, this counts as in-house suspension, out-of-school suspension, so we do have sometimes where discipline takes over, we would, we want to make sure. It's, it's usually behavior, the way they treat the teachers, or the way the, their approach is. But we also keep in mind that these things, these kids are coming out of COVID, and they've never really had that interaction. It's been missing, so I think it's more of a redirection, but as of some sort of positive reinforcement, in this case, negative reinforcement, we would have to tell parents, say, this is how we, we wanted to, want them to act, you know? And, and these are, usually I wouldn't breach the confidentiality, but these are heavy ones where we couldn't avoid them, their restorative practices didn't work. These were more likely assaults, like physical assaults on the staff or on other students, so unfortunately.
So in a way, I mean, would the interpretation be that the behaviors of these students slipped and weren't monitored and, and uplifted because of COVID, and now they're back in school, and, and now they've got some guidelines that they need to follow, and they're just less able to do that? Or you've got a new vice principal or something that's decided to crack the whip? I mean, you know?
Well, certainly, structure was missing. And when, when they stayed home, there was, schools have structure.
Yeah.
I mean, we, we follow, we do certain things with respect, with dignity, with integrity, and at home, parents do go to work, and that is sometimes missing, and that's something we, that sometimes needs redirection. So certainly, coming out of that and then being in a new environment, because mostly you see that when it's a new child that's coming to us, and then they've been either out of school for so long, because parents keep continuously moving due to other issues, underlying issues, foster care, or, so, yes, it could be that, and one of the primary factor is that.
I haven't seen the comparison to state standards, I'm just curious if, does your data reflect what's happened across the state? I mean, maybe, maybe Dr. Hunter, somebody else could answer that, too. I don't know. I'm just, I'm just curious. I, I imagine that it's a similar thing, that this is not unique to your campus. I'm just trying to understand where we are.
Our percentage is also going, it goes high, the percentage reflects higher number, because we, our sample data is so small due to our enrollment.
Sure, yeah.
Compared to the state, so states at 15%, you'll see us at 15%, but that would be only like maybe a one child.
Yeah, so every one or two kids that have been suspended, so your numbers are, just shoot up. That makes total sense.
Yeah.
Sure, sure.
So that's one thing. I'll have the data handy, I'm sorry.
And I would imagine that you have higher suspension issues on kids that are in more advanced grades that transfer into you. That would make more sense, yeah, and, and therefore, they've come from other problems, from other.
They have come from other schools. Let me introduce myself, I'm David Figaro, I'm the principal. I, I will say that, that we did have a real strict regimen last year and the years coming up. We have implemented PBIS systems to, to reduce that. We've seen that reduction. That was also to get our chronic absenteeism rates down. We have seen that, that, that work also with the PBIS. We needed a need, we had a need for some talks and assemblies and in-classroom talks about the language used. And I think what we're trying to, coming out of COVID, I think students were using language that most schools find right now to be alarming, and schools in, in America are not tolerating that type of language and threat used against other students and the school establishment itself. So those talks and those assemblies and the PBIS has reduced that, and this year, we are, we have a dramatic reduction in suspensions so far.
Since the year.
Yeah. So those are, those are, those prior years, we've learned from this.
I would imagine that as we move farther and farther away from the COVID time, COVID time, is that you're, you know, kindergarten up to second, maybe third grade, those issues will not, because you're back to a structure as they learning to go to school. And so you have, I would think the issues with that population as they move up are going to drop off as far as being problems and suspensions.
Yes.
Compared to the transfer in population.
Actually, they need themselves back to, back to school, back to the, the, the public school setting, the in-school setting, not hybrid situation, or not the online situation. I think we've seen how the world, the media and internet influences our students to speak and say things that they think is, is appropriate. And so we've had, we've had a lot of, of assemblies and classroom and one-on-one counseling for students to make them understand that this type of language, it's, it's for your roadblock, I guess they say, for your game system, your, your live internet play and speech, but it's not for school, so.
I urge you, keep, keep it up, so we don't see them all in ViHines and JJC. I mean, that's, that's the whole point.
Yeah. Well, thank you.
Go ahead.
There will be a significant reduction.
Thank you for addressing that, I appreciate it.
Do you guys have an after-school program?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Because I know, I mean, I served on a charter board before, and we finally were able to implement the after-school program, and it helped with some of the, the registration and being able to kind of attract some families, because of course, like, they don't always have childcare after work or before work ends, and that sort of thing.
Yep, we have, we have an after-school program. It's, it's, our teachers are tutoring and working with kids even in the after-school. So we have seen how, it's been a benefit to our population of our.
And then what is your percentage of English language learners enrollment?
We have, we have 20.
21. And do you typically, with the English language learning, like, are they all like different grades? Like, do you see a grade more than another grade, or is it kind of even?
Well, actually, this year, there was a few, and one particular, but it's pretty, it's pretty well distributed throughout, and we just, we have a brand-new first year of EL students, so.
And then I was happy to hear, because I, one of my questions was, where do they typically end up in high school, going to? And so it's really cool to see that a lot of them do go to CTEC and.
And other charters, CTEC and other charters.
Okay. And then what, so what are some of the other ones that they tend to go to?
Well, Tino.
Okay.
Design science, we've always promoted design science a lot. There's, there is Soul, but we've had a few students that went Soul. But they're in the area, there are students that do actually, you know, go to Fresno High, I've had a few students that go to Roosevelt, UHS, so it's.
And do you guys, like, do like partnerships with, like, like, for example, CTEC, or even other like, like workforce development, where they like kind of maybe present opportunities for future jobs and, and like getting them introduced into the tech world, or maybe forestry type jobs, or, or healthcare jobs that are like more, like, is there any of that, like, happening?
So we do, our program, summer program, where we offer jobs, like, to our students who are graduating. So every summer, we have like about six, seven kids, and we offer them jobs, so we pay around with our staff, like IT, whatever, where interests are. And then they do like four weeks of, and they get a check, and then they begin to make a decision, and then we give them a second. When it comes to other job, other partnerships, it's just pretty tough of, first, we like to see what the interests are on site, and then we do have connections in that community, and we reach out to them, say, hey, this is who wants a job. A lot of our kids are alums, and there are a few of them are up in San Luis Obispo, they're doing aerospace engineering, they come back, and then they say, you know what, you told us to do work in IT or do this, and then we decided to pursue this, or change our schools last minute, because that's what applies. So that's what we do, we start from home, and then wherever they want to go.
And I think, you know, when it comes to like, a lot of times, having that idea of like, you go to the traditional route of going to college, and there's so many other opportunities, and I think sometimes even the parents don't know about those opportunities, and they're the ones guiding primarily the students and their futures. And so being able to expand on that and, and saying like, there's all these different opportunities, and you don't have to go to the, through the traditional route, because it's not for, for everybody. So I think that's, that's awesome to have that. And then are you guys facing any type of issues with regards to like your neighborhood or the area that you're in? Are there any concerns you have, like, being there, that neighborhood surrounding or anything?
We, we actually, we have a strong partnership with the Fresno PD, so if there's anything that happens, the PD chief texts me and goes, you know what, lockdown. But that's because when they have activity in the area, so they want to make sure our kids are safe. It's a very secure campus, we buzz people in, and we also cross our students, because what our public area is, across the, across the, across from school, across the street. So we've, we've had situations where police is in the area, but it's just because they watch out for the kids, all the neighbors watch out for the kids, so we've never had a situation where we had a breach of security, they came in or anything. But we, as being downtown, we do come across some, some things, but again, these people remember us, and then they're like, you know what, let's text Ricky, or let's text Mr. Fig, and we'll go from there. So we have a good security system, my parents are IT director. I mean, all of these people, like you guys said, takes a village to raise those kids, so they're safe.
So if parents were concerned that, well, it's in the neighborhood that I'm not sure it's, like, you guys are very secure, and you guys provide, like, you guys have a great relationship with PD and all of that, and you guys provide a great education, so if parents wanted, you know, to enroll their kids, that it's a safe place to do it.
Yeah, it's, it's, I, I don't think I should say that, but it's safer than public. Downtown, I mean, I've never got robbed here, I mean, it's been six years, or you never got, our cars are fine, they never got attacked or anything. Yes, it's a safer neighborhood. People do have connotation about downtown, that's the sad bit, but it's, it's very safe.
Thank you so much.
Oh, I was just going to say, thank you for the work that you guys have done, it is recognized. Four years ago, I was a new board member, and your guys' board, your, like, charter renewal came up, and I was like, whoa, how do I make this decision? And so it's recognized, it's a lot of effort that you guys have put forward, very creative resolution that was developed by Dr. Hunt. You know, I want to thank you for your leadership. You know, anybody who knows anything about charter schools, walk anywhere in the state and say that, that this is the person who works here, and they're like, you, you got the best guy. But it's a lot of effort on your guys' part, and I think that all of us need to take recognition of that and see that from where you were four years ago, when I was like, I don't even know how, how this happens, to, to where you are today, it's nothing short of turning the, turning the entire ship around and heading an entirely different direction. And that's what is, that's what's reassuring to me, that it's, it's putting those kids first. And that was the really, really hard part back then, four years ago, is, you know, we were deciding about kids, and not only just kids, kids' education, and how those would continue. But thank you so much for how much you guys have done, what you brought in, the, the general cultural change that has been brought at Kepler. So thank you.
Good job, good job.
Good job, good job. I kudos a lot of what my colleague has said. It was a very tough decision for us in the pandemic. We had four hundred and twenty-five students that we had to make a decision for. And as a mother, I had to make that decision. Um, but we trusted you. And there's been a lot of staff change and a lot of turnover. And you've grown with the guidance of the county and Dr. Hunt and the staff that works alongside with the guidance. And we're grateful you all were willing to work with us because we all have one common goal, which is the students of Fresno County and serving them with the best that we have in excellence and education. Um, I just want to ask a question in regards to the chronic absenteeism for your last reporting year of twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Extremely high, uh most likely a correlation um with your suspension uh rate. I'm sure, you know, I know the numbers are low, which makes them high. But um they are rather high um for our most um vulnerable students, shall I say. I'm curious to see what you have or plan to implement to turn that around, to try to uh maybe recapture some of the students we might have lost? Or how you plan on um revisiting to try to increase the enrollment? We know during the pan, during the pandemic, our children were isolated and therefore those three years they did not develop their social skills. So now they do not have any conflict resolution skills. And that is where the problem is falling. They do not how to resolve conflict. And so that's what you're seeing on campus. Interesting. And thank you for sharing the verbiage concern now on campus and falling into roadblocks. And I'm deleting the app off my tablet because my grandkids play that. And when they come to see grandma, they're always asking me for Roblox, Roblox bucks. So I'm concerned now because you're telling me there's some language concerning language within the game. So thank you for sharing that. It's always good to have open, good communication and be lifelong learners as we are. To know that verbiage and the language that's coming on campus now. Early in my career, my uh kindergarten teachers had came back from school, from winter break one year and they were appalled with the language the kindergartners were using. And F-bombs and all of this. And, you know, we all came back twenty years ago. And they were like, I can't believe the kindergartners, the language they're using it. And we were like, what? You know, we were all appalled and that was twenty years ago. So understanding the landscape, it's coming through now the gaming systems and the games and the choices we have to make for our students as always as trusted guardians. So um, thank you for sharing that. And then just any thoughts that you might have of I, I know we've lost some, we're trying to retain, but what is your plan for um getting those numbers down? And I know with suspension in-house and all that, and thank you for clarifying the type of incident that occurred to receive that type of suspension.
The last year's data was thirty-eight percent for chronic absenteeism. This year we've significantly improved. We're now at twenty-five, one five percent. Usually these uh fact, we do have an attendance policy that says if you're tardy three times, it will be an absent. So we are working on uh, again, we want kids in school. We want them to learn. We want them to focus on uh education or other things, socially, more than peace, working with other peers. And that also keep them away from electronics, the games that they play. And one of those things we do is that if we don't see, we make calls, phone calls every day. So today I'd say twenty-five kids were gone. Um, and we make phone calls. Uh, we watch their pattern, uh what they're doing. And then we also have um pass passes if you need to go. And we do understand that there might be other factors, economic factors or um just any other factors, foster home placement, unhoused situations, transportation. So we do uh look at those factors. We do interview uh our parents to get to know them as much as we can. And these are the things that are eliminating that. And also one thing is that we're asking for excuses. Like, why are you gone? What it is that's bothering you? Are you going through a situation at home that we need to know? We have these students that are going through some situation and we're trying to mitigate that. We have a a plan for that. If you do, this is where you reach out to us. So these are the things that are bringing us even closer to our student bodies um to it and just knowing where they come from and uh and also parent education is essential because people, I guess, COVID really shifted the whole dynamic of how education works. Um, so educating those parents, why your child is in school, why it is important. Um, I mean, uh, we have uh kids, they're, they're living with siblings or they're doubling up in the house. Uh, and then they see as an example that, oh, the elder sister doesn't need to go to school because she's in college. So why do I go? So they're leading by example. So we're trying to differentiate those differences, you know, telling them because again, they do not have the cognitive uh ability to understand why so-and-so is doing what. But I guess that's connection, those connections are helping. And that's why we're down to twenty-five, one five percent. And then ones that are not, that are habitual, that are chronically absent, we do have smart purposes for those. Uh, we try to get meeting and we try to do meetings as per their availability. Yes, just trying to communicate and connect with them. And uh, again, last dojo, we, teachers are emailing them, hey, why are you not in school and getting a medical note or all these things. And these things matter. These things matter. These small things matters because again, if a kid isn't in school, so they are away from other things uh that they might be doing, the parent may not be aware. Because we are the safest place. Schools are the safest place. To be here with our children and we have good people in education, good people who are taking care of them. So it's hard to find good, good people. And people need to know that. Our parents need to know that, you know, you're, you're with a trusted individual.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Just to follow up on what it's in what you said. Actually, you are a neighborhood school because a big chunk of your children live there, live in that area, don't they? And and uh, and so they need that close, safe place. And and secondly, I think there's a few kids from staff that we have that go to Kepler. Yeah. Yeah, so, right, that's what I thought. So anyway. I, uh, thank you. Keep it up.
Giving us a chance and we want to be back.
Oh, you bet.
Keep up the great work.
Thank you.
Keep up the great work. Thank you.
Okay, now we'll move on to action items. Uh, J one um has to do with accountability report card. Uh, Diane?
I'm right here. Thank you. Good afternoon, Board President Clyde, Superintendent Cofer and members of the board. Under the provisions of Proposition ninety-eight, schools in California are required to prepare annual school accountability report cards. Two cards are being presented today to the board, one for Alice Worsley School, serving minors in Fresno County's residential institutions, and one for Violet Hines and Educational Academy, community school serving probation and district-referred students. The purpose of these report cards is to inform the local school community about conditions and progress being made in our schools. The information, we keep it, all the information we keep on our Fresno County Superintendent Schools website. And our presenter for these is Dr. Philip Menchaca.
Yeah, that's right. We're here.
Dr. Clyde, board member, Superintendent Cofer. Good afternoon. Uh, Mr. Hammond and I are here to request approval of the twenty-three, twenty-four uh school accountability report card for alternative education for both Violet Hines Education Academy and Alice M. Worsley School. Any questions? I feel like I just.
I know.
Came up so fast.
Are there any questions? Because we have all the data. You've supplied it to us well and we've, you know, advanced read it.
I'd just like to make a comment and that is um uh teacher credentialing. I mean, if I recall in the past, years in the past, we had some that, we had many more that, that weren't prepared for the class they were teaching. And I understand that if you're a English language arts teacher and you have to teach something else because we have such small numbers, I get, but, but they're credentialed, which is a big deal because I think oftentimes, at least in the past, um alternative ed programs did not have fully credentialed teachers. And so I just want to commend you for that. And I know that you're working on trying to get as much alignment as possible in the credential and the teaching in the area that they're credentialed. But I, but I get that. I also want to say I attended a school board meeting the other night of a local district and you're going to be getting a couple more kids. Um, and and that's our job. That's our job. You know, that's your job to take, take those kids that cannot, can no longer manage or be managed or manage themselves in their own district. So um it's hard work. I was happy to tell them that we've got a graduation coming up at Violet Hines and and kids are completing. And I think that's another thing to be commended for because oftentimes the completion doesn't happen, you know, they leave, whatever. Anyhow, so.
Yeah, they, kids who were transferred back to their home schools this, this last month. And we have five who are graduating. And uh we had six more kids enrolled just today. So.
No, those are probably from the, some of them from the district I just sent to.
It would be really good to know the kids that leave and go back to their home school, that stay there, behave themselves and graduate.
Well, we do.
That means you really turned a corner.
In place where we do follow the students. So we do a week check-in, a thirty-day check-in, and then we do a periodic check-in as needed. So if these kids are struggling, we'll do more check-ins. But in general, we've had pretty good success so far. We do have a couple of kids who, who were able to transfer out, but they want to stay with us for the, for the remainder of the year.
That's cool.
Yeah, it's really cool.
Nice to actually document that. It'd be a good show and tell point that uh how many kids you help and save, really. Otherwise, it'd be dropped out, period. And so I don't know how you can do that. I certainly can't dictate that you do it. But it would be nice if, if you had that, this is one that went back and completed and got the degree and stayed out of trouble.
So we just pilot, we're piloting a transition uh program. Piling data on the screens that we're checking in with right after um they're, they're released and we do have those check-ins periodically. We have a staff that is actually we've kind of developed our own system internally to um to collect that data. And so hoping to have in the next year, some data that can speak to that. Actually, we can actually talk to where they are in plan and how they will.
Yeah, and it'd be nice to follow them all the way to their high schools, graduation. Yeah, yeah.
I think we can probably expand that, that transition support too. So, so like I said, we're beginning stages of that position and that person working on that that we've never had in. So we're excited.
But that's at the JJC. I was thinking also about ViHines.
We would just have to track the data and.
You could do it the same way.
Yeah, we would do it. We have a guided learning specialist that works at both schools. That's the full time, our psychologist. So we have three people that actually go to schools and do checking. We actually had gone to JF Hall a couple of times to check in a couple of students there also that we had at E H A who were.
That went back. And and uh, but you'll get those back probably.
We, we got, we got her back and she's doing, she's doing wonderful. Yeah.
Yeah, because you keep them longer than JJC does. So.
Depends. It depends. Yeah.
Typically.
I heard one that the other night, they, they referred a student to Violet Hines for three hundred and sixty-five school days. Not calendar days, but school days. I'd not heard that kind of assignment before, but that's a, that's a long time.
Yeah, um, we have a student, Jordan Van, who's going to be graduating with us, who's been with us for almost three years.
So that must have been a lot of that by her choice.
His choice, yeah.
Yeah, his choice. Okay.
I have a question. So what are you doing to increase your graduation rates for the Black and Hispanic and socio-economically disadvantaged students? I've got like sixty-two in the cohort and ten graduating. And our African-Americans, fourteen in the cohort and two graduating. Our Hispanics, thirty-nine in the cohort and eight graduating. What are we doing to help encourage our students of color to finish that graduation mark?
Well, we, we have a wonderful program in place for all of our students to, to reach graduation. Um, the issue comes down to whether or not they stay with us and whether or not they transition back to their school. So we don't necessarily have them the entire time. So to have five graduates is, is a pretty big deal for us. Because um we have eight students who left us and hopefully they graduate with their other school. So the ethnicity really is impacted by, or the um, the graduation rate is impacted by the transition rate. So.
All the more reason to track them.
Yeah.
To see if they graduate. So you don't, they don't look as like they're a dropout.
Yeah. Thank you, Dr. Yeah.
There are other programs that we're, you know, our new transition program that we're uh, we're implementing and piloting is a ability to speed to that part of the graduation rate, right, and trying to get that graduation rate up. We also have, um, we're looking, we're piloting, starting basically last week, a new behavior intervention program. This uh, we're piloting it. Also, but, but those uh, it's P I S supported. And um, that is really a refact of our behavior intervention program. And and we're, that program itself is going to help with targeting those, you know, some of those reps that we have at Exendance and the suspension rate and graduation overall, it really does well affect graduation rate, behavior and classroom and in the facility. So there are some, some pilots that we're, that we're really working on. We're, we're excited because they they're in implementation mode. They are, we are piloting. We've had a lot of meetings and collaborations with staff and all to to plan uh, planning these programs and we're, we're, they're running now. And so we're, we're hopeful that the data will get better, our local data, kind of our internal data. And so we're hoping that those numbers will, will get better over the years in this process. P I S, behavior intervention and transition uh, transition support.
And also creating our pathways that draw our students, that keep them um engaged with our forestry pathway we were talking about. Getting them outside into nature and building the pathway and the certifications for them to build their family legacy as well. And getting them outside. We had a beautiful introduction. We were in Reedley about the forestry program that they're implementing through their R O P program. So remembering, yes, they're in, but to get out and what a wonderful experience and opportunity and, and job pathway we could offer to them with the forestry as well. So, you know, we talked about it. Don't forget. Okay. Thank you. Don't forget about it. Thank you.
And I do want to add and highlight the intentionality of the instruction that's happening. The data is really driving the instruction. When Dr. Masamoto and I were doing our walkthrough at JJC, we had the pleasure of going into the library and seeing some of our curriculum and instruction team members working um with data because they had just discovered that they had students at the third-grade reading level and possibly, and around that level, which means that we have instructors that are ready to teach ninth grade and up. But yet we have students that are not capable of doing anything more than third grade. So making sure that we're having those conversations where our data is matching the instruction in the classroom. And thank you for taking the time and doing that because that means a lot of individualized instruction for students that are not on an I E P, they're not special ed students. These are general ed students that have slipped through the crack for the last six or seven years.
Well, as a lib, as a retired school librarian with twenty years of outstanding service, for the past twenty years, I had black male seniors that were graduating, that were reading at a third-grade reading level. So you're telling me nothing has changed?
It's changing.
You said third-grade reading level.
Yeah, well, the numbers are changing.
No, they're not. No, they're not.
If there's a way to finish what you're tracking program, when you get to your, probably one to two years away, and you get your numbers from the schools that they went to, that they actually graduated, is there a way to report that on the state level? Is there a mechanism for that?
We don't have a, I don't think there's a system.
It would be good if there was, even if you did it yourself in-house to where it could be referred to. Because otherwise, the receiving schools are taking the credit for the work you guys did. And so I would like to see that reflect on your data. That's what I, that's my point. And so, you know, a win's a win. I mean, if you can show that they came to Byhinds for a year and then went back and did a full year or two years and graduated, you did your job. That's what that amounts to. And you should be able to show that in some form. And so if you could be thinking along that lines, I think that would really help the whole, all of our efforts, the county office, everything.
And just.
That's not on the dashboard.
But I mean, that doesn't mean we can't.
No, but we can, we can track it.
We're just as proud getting them just transitioned back into their.
Sure.
Yeah, but you want to make sure that they do well when they get there.
Because it's such a stellar program. And you know, once the students get there, because I had a cousin that attended there. And once you get them, you know, most of them want to stay. And, you know, our prior superintendent would cover the bill because most of them wanted to stay. And so it's not saying the program isn't excellent. The program is fantastic. You all are doing a fantastic job providing the extra wraparound services that they need. It's just retaining them, you know, and getting them over that benchmark. Because I worked at Jay Young, we were the safety net of the district. So it's that demographics. And so you have to meet them where they are, you have to give them what they need to get them to come back. Yeah. So you got it. You got it.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Well, I just was going to mention that at the JJC, I mean, we're talking about like career opportunities for them. When you say a commitment by probation, I think I remember sitting with you and everybody going like, we don't know how to come up with the money to expand the CTE program. And I'm pretty sure they found a way, right? And so they're looking at doubling the area of the welding shop and community partners making some serious donations into there to really expand that area. And just an example of the good work that's going on out there. You know, it's really something to be showcased. You know, I don't feel uncomfortable saying a state model for people to see, and I know it takes a very special person, and you have a very special person there, but really providing life-changing opportunities for youth versus today. I sat with San Diego County and the person who runs their juvenile, how should I call it, their juvenile justice facility, and that they remodeled the entire playground. And two weeks later, they, kids were out there for five hours and had a riot because, and they destroyed everything that they just put about $3 million into remodeling their outdoor area. And to see, we don't, I don't think we have those kind of problems in Fresno. And I think it's because the kind of connections that our teachers draw with the students who are there. And they only have about 150 kids in their juvenile justice facility. So they don't have a whole bunch more, but they're not drawing those same connections of respect with their juvenile correctional officers, with their teachers. But here, we're making those connections. And like, that's something for our state to take a look at of what's different that's happening in Fresno versus most other juvenile facilities that are around the state.
Excellent.
Okay. Cheryl, entertain a motion.
So moved. I'll second.
Been moved and seconded. No other discussion? Roll call, please. Yes.
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 Okay, now we'll move on to special education accountability. Dr., thank you, guys. Dr. Lur.
Thank you. Under the provisions of Proposition 98, one additional card is being presented for board approval for our special education schools that serve districts' referred students. And again, this information is available to the public on our Fresno County Superintendent Schools website. And today, we have Christina Borges, Executive Director of Special Education, with us. That we're doing. I have just a couple of bullets available for questions. We are currently serving about 630 students with extensive support needs in our programs on behalf of the school districts that are in our special education local plan area. We have 78 classrooms. Every time I say that number, I just think, oh, my goodness, that's a lot of classrooms. We have 78 throughout Fresno County. This year, we're particularly proud of our low dropout and suspension rates. Our suspension rates are very, very low. We're pretty excited about that. And I'm most proud of our decrease in chronic absenteeism. In 2022, 81% of our students were absent more than 10% of their school days. We dropped that to 60.9% in 2023, and last year, we were at 50.8%. I checked this morning, we're at 49%. If we don't stay there, I'm going to cry. So hopefully, we stay there or get even better. We do serve students with very extensive medical needs. So our rate is higher than a typical school district, but we're right in line with other county offices that serve the same population of students that we do. I'm also really proud of, let's see, what do I want to highlight? I have a lot of things on here, and I want to make sure I use my time wisely. So I'm going to pick my next favorite one. We did see a small increase in the number of students who met or exceeded standards in English, language, arts, and science. Our math performance was unchanged, but thank goodness, it did not decrease. And again, because we serve students with significant disabilities, state test scores aren't always the best way to measure our progress. We prefer to look at the students, whether they're meeting their goals and objectives in their IEP meeting. Our teacher retention and preparation is excellent. More than 95% of our classrooms are taught by a teacher who's considered highly qualified. And all 78 classrooms have a teacher. I think that's pretty amazing. We're very proud of that. And then lastly, two more things I'd like to highlight. We just finished our outdoor learning center projects that were installed at our three centers. And we are working on a sound booth project at Raymaker so that our audiologists can test students' hearing all throughout the county. And then finally, I'd like to thank her for her focus on school safety. This past year, we installed visitor management systems in our three centers, repaired our cameras, and created a single point of entry. So those are just a couple highlights. Do you have any questions? I can answer for you.
Great job.
Those safety measures are amazing. And.
They're very great.
Thank you. We want that, right?
Sounds like you're doing a fantastic job, as always.
Thank you.
Stellar. Stellar you are. Thank you, we appreciate you.
Thank you.
Yeah, and in your state data, as far, you have to factor in all the Raymaker children, too. And so, yeah. I wonder how many, how many county offices have a Raymaker-type school? Do you know?
I don't know the number. I know that the.
Half?
Centers, yeah, I'd say half.
About half?
It is decreasing. We're preferring integrated sites. But I know our closest neighbor, Kings, has one.
Well, it'd be pretty tough to take a fair percentage of that population from Raymaker and integrate them at a local, so that'd be logistically pretty, pretty hard. Yeah. Okay, thank you. Cheryl, entertain a motion.
So moved?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded? No other discussion? Roll call, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
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 Okay, now we'll move on to County Board of Ed Resolution Number 2025-1.
Thank you.
Be safe.
Thank you, Dr. Greenlaw.
Very pleased to have some of these questions. I'd like to start with number, or heading number three on the agenda, which is observing the adoption of Resolution Number 2025-01, in the matter of observing February as Black History Month. Americans of Black descent helped develop our nation in countless ways, those recognized and unrecognized. The contributions of Black American citizens as scientists, adventurers, educators, farmers, homemakers, and explorers of earth and sky have been recognized annually during Black History Month. The history and contributions of our Black American citizens were consistently overlooked and undervalued in the curriculum of public education institutions prior to the Civil Rights Act of 1964. And today, the history social science framework for California public schools, kindergarten through grade 12, states that the history curriculum of community, state, region, nation, and world must reflect the experiences of men and women of different race, religion, and ethnic groups, which are integrated at every level. Therefore, I recommend that the board join the superintendent in adopting Resolution 2025-01 on the month of February as Black History Month.
Thank you very much. So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please. Yes.
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 Okay, now we'll move on to 2025-2.
In the matter of recognizing February 19th as the Day of Remembrance Japanese-American Evacuation. Approximately 2,500 United States citizens and permanent United States residents of Japanese ancestry from throughout Fresno County were sent to camps in the United States for approximately three years in 1942 through 1945. After being forcibly removed from their homes and prior to being transferred to concentration camps in remote locations throughout the United States, where we had assembly centers in Fresno County for two to five months, where they lived in horse stalls at the Fresno Fairgrounds and temporary barracks installed at a lumberyard in Kindell. Eventually, the Congress of the United States enacted the Civil Liberties Act of 1988, in which, on behalf of the United States government, acknowledged and formally apologized for the, quote, "fundamental violations of the basic civil liberties and constitutional rights of these individuals of Japanese ancestry." Whereas, it is stated in the Civil Liberties Act of 1988 that the act was intended to discourage the occurrence of similar injustices and violations in the future, and make more credible and sincere any declaration of concern by the United States over violations of human rights. I invite the board now to join me in recognizing February 19th, 2025, as Day of Remembrance Japanese-American Evacuation, and encourage all Fresno County school districts to participate with appropriate activities and curriculum on this day.
I move approval.
Second.
Removed and seconded? Roll call, please. Yes.
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 Okay, now we'll move on to Association of California County Boards of Education. The ACCBE membership question and update. I'd like to refer that to Brian, Member Burton. He might be a little bit more involved in that at this point.
Been a little bit. So as they have continued on, I don't know if you guys want to know any updates on it. The association has continued, they've moved forward. There's about 13, 13 to 15 counties, I think, that have already passed or will be passing during this month to join the Association of California County Boards of Education. One of the items that I thought was kind of reassuring that maybe to talk to about them is they've secured various partnerships with some organizations to receive initial donations. There's some information in your packet today that we would share about some of their items on legislative advocacy form that they'll be doing on January 27th. The association focuses mainly on county boards of educations and items that focus specifically on county boards of education. And so for you today is consideration of us becoming members of the Association of California County Boards of Education. And I would just say, is there any questions, comments, or anything that they would like?
Okay, now we'd like to hear from, Marsha.
I submitted the documents that you have both electronically and in your packet. You know, Brian and I, I missed part of the meeting the other night. Brian was on that meeting, which is great. So I, and, you know, they're moving forward, offering some training. And I think the materials in your packet are the most recent, that I think are valuable to see, that they're providing these free sessions online, January 27th, about advocacy and legislation. There's also going to be a workshop for new county board members on February 3rd. You have in the electronic version, the due structure, which was the exact same due structure and same rates from the former California County Boards of Education. So they're not raising the rates. As a delegate to California School Boards Association, I feel that that is also an important organization to continue a relationship with, and that both of these organizations at this point in time, I believe, are valuable. I'd like to consider joining the ACCBE, at least for this year, to give them an opportunity to represent all of us, and for us to participate in the activities that they're offering. I do think it's a worthy cause. I think it's a worthy investment. And I think, if you recall last month, when I was sharing the data that CSBA collected at the delegate assembly, where they set the priorities for policy, where we have a voice, but we have such a minority voice that our issues never come to the surface. And while we, I think it's important that we have that participation with CSBA, I also feel it's important that we have a unique voice just of county boards of education, which is what ACCBE represents. So whether or not people are ready to make a decision today or not is under an acton item. I would like, love to hear feedback from people prior to the chairperson asking for a motion, just to know whether or not we can make a decision today or whether we need to table it for further consideration.
Does anyone else have any outside concerns about? Me, yeah, I guess that would be Kimberly and you. Do you have any questions?
Any, like, concern?
Unanswered.
Yeah, unanswered.
So C-A-C-C-B-E, and what was the other recommendation as well? I'm sorry.
Well, no, we would.
Just that.
We would remain members of CSBA. And so the president of ACCBE, Bina, has been having meetings with CSBA about working collaboratively in some of the items where we'd be filling in some of the gaps that county boards aren't getting from CSBA. They have also, from ACCBE, they have also had meetings with capital advisors who we know from CSBA. Our capital advisors have been in support of how they can be of assistance. Of course, I'm like, they're always looking for business, probably. DeVoe Burr is another legislative advisory firm who they've been in talks with. I don't know what I want to call, is it Annette Lewis? Is she Region 14?
She was recommended to be the Region 14 director. I had, I have not heard that she was appointed, but the conversation sounded like she was.
They referred to her as the head of Region 14. And so they have been scheduling meetings with Annette and how they can work together with Region 14. A lot of effort has gone in by many of us there on bringing the ACCBE to start building some relationships based upon prior items with the Irving Foundation. There's a Stewart Foundation that another has a connection to, and then the Sierra Foundation from up in the Sacramento area. And so there's sort of a lot of people kind of moving it forward. On the ACCBE website, you will notice that the new county, well, not the new, the county board member handbook is now electronically published on their site. They have taken ownership of that. Previously, if we wanted another copy of it, we had to pay for it in paper from CSBA. And so CSBA has kind of said, you know, you guys, we developed it in conjunction, and if you're going to take ownership of it, you can. if you're going to take ownership of it, you can take ownership of it. So there has been quite a few, lots of their research, county boards, with the number of board members that are on county boards across the state, if you were wondering. This year alone, there's 63 new county board members.
Oh, okay.
So, Itzy, you're not alone. You've got a whole bunch of them. 63 people took office just this year. So that handbook, I think, is tremendously assistive. And then they're looking at, how can they provide mentorship from someone not in your county?
Right.
Who has, you know, established experience, that they can be, serve as a mentor role to these new board members as they're elected, which I think is nice, because it's a different perspective from a different county. And many of them have lots of experience, like Dr. Clyde.
Full geezer, go ahead.
They have also been doing some meetings with, I'm just going to call it JSACs, who I think falls under the Superintendents Association. And they've actually talked to JSACs about possibly some of us attending the JSACs conference this year. And that is the Juvenile Court Community and Alternative School Administrators of California, which generally we haven't had a lot of partnership with, but these are our, these are the administrators of our students. And so how can we further partner with that? And so I'd say that that's a, you're seeing a step forward on, a comment before was there wasn't a lot of collaboration between the, I don't know what to call your guys, you guys had an old, the superintendents had an old name, but they have a new name. See, yeah, you don't, yeah, there's no acronym anymore, and how much collaboration was happening there. And so it's moving that to have a lot more collaboration between the County Board Members' Association and CSSESA's new name. So the Superintendents Association and the County Board Members Association will have increased collaboration with each other on moving legislative priorities forward that are specific to county organizations.
Nice.
And they're looking for people to help draft finishing up the vision and mission statements. So if you'd like to volunteer, you're a really good writer of those types of things.
Actually, just doing the math, there's 68 new ones against, I don't know if all 58 counties have.
It's 63.
Yeah, I mean, that's not a lot. That's a little over one per county, average.
But a lot of counties have like three, there are a lot of counties that they turn to significant portions of their boards.
They turned their board.
But I mean, average wise, it's not, not huge. I mean, that could be, that's probably about the lowest they'll get. I would imagine you'd have, each cycle, it might kick out. If it doesn't, I'll be surprised.
I think 63 is high.
Yeah, that is very significant for some boards.
The members are up for reelection.
It could have changed several boards significantly.
And a lot of it is due to board members not running.
Running, yeah.
Or board members resigning midterm.
You mean open seats?
Yes.
Thank you.
Monterey County, I think, had two.
Really?
That went open.
Monterey?
Yep.
Wow. Yeah, they retired. Pandemic took a lot.
Do we, oh, let's just put it out, entertain a motion.
So moved?
Oh.
Need to say it's a motion.
Oh, I don't have it before me. I'm sorry that we, as a county board, are voting to join ACCBE for this year as a membership.
And put in the 5,500 in dues.
5,584.
This year's membership, I need to say a monetary, I'm sorry.
No, just say this, Ms. Yer, for 2025.
I'll second.
Consider joining ACCBE membership.
There we go.
Says.
So got a first and a second.
No other discussion? Roll call? Yes.
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 Okay, there's no closed session items.
Move on trustee activities, travel requests.
If you're not getting regular emails from them, let somebody know, because they do send emails out almost every week. And some people, if it's hit your junk folder, it will go there for forever.
Any travel requests?
I have a travel request for myself, for my annual CAPSCE conference in Napa. This is a highly coveted conference. It normally sells out very quick by our East Coast educators. They are the first ones to book up. I would like to extend an invitation. Let's find him on fire. Oh, here we go. I'm sharing space with my board member. He just takes all the space. I tried to condense, but okay, here we go. She's ready. I'd like to extend an invitation, and of course, to our board members. It's July 13th through the 16th, as well as I'd also like to extend an invitation, today I had the opportunity to meet with our African-American students, to the African-American advisors, Theodore Bernard and his other associate. If our board is not able to attend, I think this would be an excellent opportunity for them to be able to collaborate with other African-American educators from the East Coast, from Los Angeles, from North Cali, from South Cali, from the Bay Area, to be able to join together and collaborate and to learn and to be inspired for our year coming in 2025, and just coming together for the good of our Black students and collaborating together. And this is our fifth annual institute for CAPSCEs. And I would just like to extend that invitation. Thank you.
Okay. Any other travel?
What does CAPSCE stand for? California Association of Black School Educators. And then would this be a time for us to talk about our mileage afterwards or later? So I just have a question. On my mileage report, Anaheim was crossed out. And was that reasoning one? Okay. And when shall we expect that? Because our previous mileage one, we haven't received that yet. I haven't. Has it gone out?
Well, we got this one.
Okay, this is a new one. Yeah, okay. I'll follow up. Thank you, my love. I know, that's what I'm saying. I haven't even gotten the last one, and we have a new one up. I know, that's why I was, okay, I'll get your address.
Did you update your address on your W9?
I was telling that too. We'll do it after. Thank you, my love.
I received my mileage from the last time.
When did you receive it, Marcy?
I can't tell you.
This one doesn't even know. I said I'm gonna call heaven. Okay, yeah, I haven't received. Okay, thank you. Because I was expecting for Christmas, it didn't come.
No, I think it came out.
Okay.
Yeah, there's no checks process.
Thank you. We'll follow up later. Thank you, I appreciate you. Everything that you do for us, you are appreciated. We have our travel packet for February emailed already to us. We are ready to go with you, Superintendent.
Okay, we don't need to action out of that. No. Okay, any travel expenses? Just make sure you sign them and get them back.
A motion to approve the orderly mileage reimbursement.
Any second?
So moved.
We've moved and seconded. Roll call, please. Yes.
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 Okay, receptive correspondence from anyone?
Ah, yes, I received an email, and I just want to thank my superintendent, my deputy superintendent, over the holidays for just responding, and then staffers coming in and making it a prior priority once we return back in session. And I'm just grateful for your extra touches always, and assisting me when I reach out. Thank you.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Comments by board members? Itzy, you can start.
Sure. I, okay. So, yeah, I just wanted to, one, thank our superintendent for making sure that our meetings are archived, and that, you know, our public is able to watch our meetings. And I know we're doing more to make sure that our sound system is working, and hopefully soon we'll be able to be projected as well here in the room. Another thing, I know right now in the community, it's been very much a big issue in terms of protecting our students with regards to immigration. And so I just want to thank our superintendent for being in the forefront of this issue, and for, you know, being so, just caring about our students, really. Because at the end of the day, it's about making sure that our students feel safe in school, that our parents feel safe taking their kids to school. And I just am so happy because in the past, I mean, I've worked with other electeds, and this issue is, this isn't the first time it comes up, but it's not always where our leaders are receptive to addressing the issue, or sometimes, you know, it becomes very political. And I just want to thank you for being so open to figuring out how we can best inform our parents. And I know that to date, FCSS put out a statement addressing some of those concerns, so I want to thank you for that as well. And, you know, I, this issue is very, very personal to me, and I shared my story about, you know, being undocumented and growing up, going through K through 12 system undocumented. I went to college being undocumented. But also, I experienced firsthand my dad being deported, and I was in first grade. And so, you know, today was very hard in thinking about that experience, because all of this, the raids that have been going on in Kern County have really brought back a lot of that trauma that I went through. And I think I hadn't really thought about it until those things happened. And I had a conversation with my mom today about, you know, the experience that I went through. And I said, I don't recall going to school, or what happened, or any of that, but I remember the moment it happened. I remember where I was. I remember my mom crying. I remember my family being distraught and all of that. So that part, you know, I know that really was traumatizing, and so I know that it's something that our students very much fear. But I know that when it came to school, it was a place where I felt safe. And so I think if my mom had chosen to not send me to school because of what happened, or because of the fear that maybe, you know, immigration might find us there, or any of that, I don't know what I would have done, because school was where I felt happy, it was where I felt safe, it was where I felt that I could forget about everything that I was going through at home. And so I don't, my fear is that our students are going to find themselves in a difficult position about, you know, whether they go to school, or they stay home, or being at school dealing with whether or not they're going to come home to their parents. And it's a very real fear, and I think we've seen it even on social media, teachers sharing that their students have this very real fear. And so I hope that we will continue to make this issue important, and I hope that we also think about how we can be supportive to those teachers as well, because they're going through it. They're, they're being traumatized by the questions, they're having to deal with the emotional aspect of their students. And then also just urging the parents, because I know what we put out in the statement, it's really about making sure that our parents are updating their emergency cards, making sure that our parents are, have someone that can take care of their kids should anything happen, that they know what important documents they should have, that they, if there are any legal questions, that they reach out to those nonprofits that are doing a lot of the work already out there. But more so just being able, as you know, the county board of education, I think, to sometimes just being vocal about the issue, and just knowing that it's a very real issue, and that our voice matters in what we say. And so I'm very glad that we're not sitting back, and that something is, at least we're addressing the issue. And I hope that there will be more partnerships and more communication with our school districts, so that we can all have a very unified message, and so that our parents feel that they can trust us when it comes to the communication that we put out there on this issue. So thank you so much for everything. And I also have red cards. I know we're going to have some here at the FCSS office for any other school districts that may want to have, these red cards are know your rights cards, and they basically tell the parents, like, if they encounter immigration, what their rights are, what they should and shouldn't say, but more so just to protect them from unintended consequences of interactions with us. So that's pretty much all I have today. Thank you so much.
We love you.
I'd love to have some of those cards.
Yeah, I think it's really important that all of us as board members, whether you go on a radio show or whatever, that you're there for the kids. You want to have a safe haven for the kids. Let the adults figure it out in Washington, come up with whatever they're going to do. But it's the children that's our focus, and whatever we can do to make them feel safe in coming here or not, they're going to be bothered enough as it is. We don't need to add to it. So keep all that stuff out of the school grounds. They don't really have any reason to come on school grounds, if you get right down to it.
Yeah.
It's just a safe haven for them until it's all worked out. And then everybody has a solid foundation of what's going to go on. But I think that the, I hope cooler minds maintain and continue that the children feel comfortable and want to go to school, and stay in school. Doesn't do us any, nobody any good to not have kids go to school. That's a lose all the way around. So, anyway, I echo that. And I've been on some hot shows, Trevor Carey for one, talking about that very thing several years ago. And I took flak for it, but, you know, you sit up, you fight for what's right, and for the kids, let the adults in Washington figure it out, but leave the kids alone. So that was my focus. And so, anyway, I echo your sentiment.
Thank you. Well, Itzy, thank you for sharing that. I know right now, it's a scary time, especially for our parents and our students, especially when messages are going out on social media, telling the parents to keep their children at home, because they're afraid if they walk, or if they're at a convenience store, a van might pull up. So thank you for sharing the red cards. I was at a meeting earlier this week and saw the red cards, and the red cards are going out. They have them in digital versions, and we're trying to stay informed, keep the lines of communication open, but also let people feel safe. Don't feel safe right now, and I'm sorry that your community, our community's feeling that way, but we're here for you. We support you, babe. We got you.
I mean, we just passed a resolution about some other group in history, and we need to learn. Anyway, okay, let's get back on track. Okay, well, actually, Kimberly, did you have any for board comment?
Comment? Well, I did my invitation for the CAPSCE conference, and I shared about my email from Ms. Toffrey, and an invitation, of course, to our African-American conference. I met with the students this morning and had a wonderful conversation with them, and looking forward to the conference. They selected me to receive an honor, and they greeted me with so much love today with knowing about Black excellence in your community, and I felt very honored to be with them this morning. So don't forget about February 4th, and that's all I have. Thank you. I met with the students this morning and had a wonderful conversation with them and looking forward to the conference. They selected me to receive an honor and they greeted me with so much love today with knowing about black excellence in your community. And I felt very honored to be with them this morning. So don't forget about February 4th and that's all I have. Thank you.
I usually say there's lots going on around our county. You know, get out and support students and their efforts, whether it be performances. I know there's, Mercedes Edwards Theater has plays going on this weekend and next weekend. Various other theaters do from the schools that they put a lot of effort into from elementary through high schools. There are student sports all the time that are going on around our valley. And we've got some really excellent talent all the way across. And I think tomorrow, we have something across the street, possibly to participate in, the Garlanding Ceremony, which we had a small part in making a contribution to making that project happen.
And they have received their check. I confirm.
Oh yeah, they've got their check.
Yeah, African American Museum, yes.
And then additionally, wanted to mention the item that's on January 29th here, the elected now what, that I'm sure Marcy has put a ton of effort into. And if you're able to be there to serve as sort of a local mentor to newly elected persons and show support to people, because I remember, you know, a short time ago, being elected and thinking, what did I get myself into? And you know, you thought you knew everything beforehand and then you came and you were like, wow, it's a lot, it's more than I thought. And it's that strength and support that we draw from one another that helps us each get through. So I'd encourage anybody to go and be there for that. And other than that, thank you.
That's what I'm saying. That's part of what I was going to say. Please, RSVP. Can I, do you mind?
Absolutely, go ahead.
So, and I, I saw that all of you are registered for the January 21st Trustees Association event, which is going to be awesome. And yes, thank you. Brian, we, I have been working really hard, but it's not just me. Dr. Lyra and Angela have helped so much with both of those events in, in support of the Fresno County Trustees Association. And I really want to thank superintendent for allowing them to do that because it's been so helpful. There's so much to happen at this time of year with an event happening right after the holidays that requires RSVPs. It's always a challenge. But two great events, the following event will be Capitol Advisors, not to miss, on March 18th, right? Yeah, March 18th. And don't worry. So you'll get that information next. But yeah, a lot going on, a lot of events happening in this month. There's tons of things to go to in terms of student activities and celebrations, so looking forward to those. Anyhow, all good. That's my good sense.
Okay. I just wanted to talk up, we're coming up into slow motion right now, but into a new accounting zone to work on our budget. And, and I, I want to, and I think the board should kind of dive in a little bit more in understanding of the budget as we move through. And, and I'm not, there's a couple, one thing in particular I'd like to see happen more, and that's more transparency, be able to visualize where our reserves are dollar wise. And, and I'm always, never really was totally comfortable in the 20%, the carryover funds in all these departments, because we never knew where that number was. And, and, but I understand the reasoning for doing that, because I remember that was back in Pete Meas' time, is that if we zero balanced it, then it would push people going into overspend on things they didn't really need because they feared they would lose the money. And so we pushed it, we did 20% carryover, but then we really don't know where that's at. And our constituents and the bargaining units, they don't know either, and it's a distrust kind of thing that I think is, has a fix. And the fix is, it's been talked, I've kind of thought about, can we go from 20% to 10% carryover? Remember Burton was talking about the county, they have a 0% carryover. So anything overshoots goes back into...
Well, we can rebudget.
Okay, yeah.
You have to rebudget as a new allocation.
And I'm not so sure that's a good idea for us either. So somewhere in there, I would like for discussion to, so that we really know where we're at in reserve wise, because, and that's full disclosure. And it's not just for us, five board members, it's for our constituents too. Because I get asked about that. So anyway, and then I even threw out the idea, which I don't, probably not a good idea, is, is to move this whole budget process up a month. But that has a lot of logistical issues to go with it. So I thought there's, and I was talking with Kevin Otto about it, he had some, which I thought were good ideas. So Emily, I'd like for you to chime in on that.
Yeah, so there are two opportunities for board members to be involved in our budget process, which gets started at the end of this month. And it takes, keep in mind, we have over a thousand departments, budgeted departments at the county office of education, probably 1,800 pages if we were to print that. So it starts at the end of this month, we send out reports, those come back to us, we enter the data, and then we meet with each individual budget manager in March. We go through each budget, we, we make adjustments, try to get an idea of what, what they're thinking for the next year and possibly two years out. And then we go back and we enter all of that data in, and then we meet one more time with the deputy superintendents and the superintendent, and we invite the board members to that, those meetings as well. So we will send that out to you and you're more than welcome to come. I was reminded by Jason that we can't have more than two of you at a meeting, which would constitute a majority of you there. So if you all want to come to those meetings, please, you know, break them up and if you want to, you sit through those. I know we had trustee Barbara Thomas, who used to come to the special ed meeting all the time and, and look at the special ed budget. The other opportunity that I mentioned to Dr. Kline today was when we do the public hearing in May, you know, we do the LCAP and the budget, I can bring a more robust presentation for that public hearing, similar to what the LCAP. You get the full LCAP and you ask some questions. I just usually bring the, a copy of our budget because it's a public hearing for the public to make comment on, not necessarily the board members, but I could bring more information for you to ask additional questions at that point in time, prior to the adoption occurring in June. And a little more information on the 20%, keep in mind that, that that only applies to 48 departments within the Fresno County Superintendent of Schools. It's just the departments that are funded through the general fund. Those departments are mainly HR, finance, legal, credentials, and a few other ones, curriculum instruction, some of those staff. So it's not, it's not a whole, it's not a whole lot of departments that that rule applies to. Where we have restricted funds, there are no rules. Those funds are for those particular programs and for those particular actions. So there's no restrictions on their carryover. Those dollars are those dollars. So just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, and I see 1,800 pages, that sounds like a continuing resolution out of Congress. And we don't really want to go there. We can whittle it down to what they did, 180 pages, that'd be different. But it's, it's, can we look at those 40 something departments and their 20% versus what their 10%? Now, that's going to be a floater number. I understand that. Because if you have a staffer that leaves or whatever, retires early, and, and you don't refill it for three months, that's going to leave you a surplus. And so, and that happens all the time. And so that's where I'd like to see us. If we could kind of be thinking, I'm not, I can't direct you to do it anyway, it's a superintendent. But I'd like to be, so that we have better understanding, so that we can legally, we have to vote on the budget, final budget, yea or nay. And it's really important that you, that we understand it all when we vote, so it doesn't come back and bite you later. So that's where I would like to see that.
And I would be more than happy, more than happy to meet with any of you individually to go over, you know, budget. You know, Itzy, you're fairly new. If you feel comfortable, you know, just give me a call and you can come in and we can do budgeting 101 and I can, you know, give you some idea of what, how our budget's structured and versus restricted versus unrestricted and how we allocate dollars and anything like that. And for any of you, not, not just...
And that's what I'm, I'm encouraging everybody to do that. And, and, but I would like to have some sort of a thought process about the 10% withhold. And then if that goes over the 10%, I have no problem with coming back and asking for more. I mean, we've never said no. It's, it's just so we can get a real hold on our, on our reserves, because frankly, we have to demonstrate that we're a solid business to the other 31 school districts. So, so, and then there's no assumption of you're hiding money by other people and other units. So I just think it's healthy all the way around. It's not going to hurt us to think about that. So anyway, not a directive, not a voting request, just a, a hope that we can work in that direction. That's all. That's all it was. So anyway, that's all I had. So we're going to keep with the same schedule as far as the, as the April and May.
Yeah, there's no way.
And June.
Right.
We can't move that up, so we're just going to have to beef up the front end part of it, especially the April, you know, the May, April meeting, May meeting.
Right. And you'll get, you'll get a schedule for the April meetings that occur all in one week and, you know, you're more than happy to attend those meetings. That's where you could look at some of the general funded departments to see what their carryover is. It's, it's all going to be at those meetings.
Okay, yeah, but I would just hate to have to piecemeal 40 something, one of those, to see where it falls in 10% versus 20%.
There's only about a thousand more, so.
Well, no, because the unrestricted, we, we can't deal with anyway. I mean, that's, that's, that's kind of...
There's a lot of other unrestricted departments.
Restricted, I meant, yeah.
There's a lot of other unrestricted departments, but those are mainly like events, like mock trial, academic decathlon, where the funds that come in stay within that department. We don't restrict those carryover balances either, because usually that's a donation from an entity to actually sponsor that program. So that maybe stays there.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, I have no problem with that. I'm just talking about removing the suspicion that you're hiding money. That's all I'm really talking about. And so I'm not saying you are, not at all. I just want to keep it a little bit more open and transparent. And I think that, I don't think anybody argues about 10%. It's the 20% that I seem to be getting the, the flack from, and I can understand it. So anyway.
And I think we're going to, we're going to see some more oddities on the state budget with delays, because they've just ordered that state income taxes this year for basically all of Southern California, anywhere affected by fires, not doing...
He's doing that again?
Not doing till October.
Again.
So we're, some really odd projected tax items and the state does collect a pretty good piece of property taxes. And every house that burned down is no longer required to pay property taxes. So 58,000 houses in the Los Angeles area, I think they've said, they will not be paying property taxes this year.
And that'll be backfilled with state aid.
Maybe.
Well, no, I mean, to get to their ADA amount and what their, the LCF is, it has to come from somewhere.
Yeah.
So that, from where? Does the...
Yeah, I mean, the state's going to have, they're going to have some struggles to fill...
They're going to have a lot of struggles.
So your LCF bucket now, since your property taxes are lower, the state aid goes up. Your bucket doesn't get bigger or smaller, it's just...
Where do you think that would be?
What, what do I think?
The state, where do you think that would fall? 20 billion?
Oh, I have no idea, sir. I don't know whether those homes that burned down, where they're...
I mean, he's already someplace...
It's not as much as for us, but it's really, we, I mean, thinking, Los Angeles County, so with that, suspending property taxes means basically they're, they're not collecting school bond money, they're, the house doesn't exist anymore.
Right.
The physical asset no longer exists. So the value is zero.
Is there any legal precedent what happens then?
You eat the cost.
Well, yeah, but how can they?
The, well, the, the local entity has to...
The state, the local can't eat it.
Well, it's sort of, I'll give the scenario of there's a very large ranch. My brother is on an LEA and a very large tech entrepreneur sold his business to Salesforce. And so he donated his $25 million ranch to a horse therapy organization. And they lost $20 million in a taxable piece of property from their local school bond.
Because they went to nonprofit.
Because it's now to a nonprofit and the school has 54 students. So there's not a lot. So it was a huge hit to their school.
Well, they got an even bigger hit now.
Yeah, and so it's... What, what oddities is the state going to do to try to fill this spot that they're going to have by delaying till October property tax, I mean, personal income taxes? And then how are they going to deal with the state's own shortcom of very high value properties not contributing property taxes?
I mean, the good news is state revenues are trending in the right direction and, and those are actually looking good, which we didn't, weren't sure that was going to happen. The coal is 2.43%, so that's double what it was this year.
Yeah.
But again, that was before the, that was released on January 10th, before this situation's down in LA.
That's what I was just saying, there's, there's going to be some trickle through items on LA fires statewide.
So the May revise won't help you much. It, it'll still be a question mark, a big bunch of it.
Just like when we had the fires before and everything turned into a question, because we didn't have a budget until income taxes came in in October. And we're kind of flying in the blind from April to October.
Well, that's even more reason for us not to fly in the blind, and that's why I'd like to see how our reserves really fall into place. So even if we go to these 40 something meetings, I'm going to keep asking that same question. So if we could just kind of think in those terms as you prepare it, I'd like, I'd like to see what kind of numbers that works out to. I'm not looking at creating more money, I'm just looking at where, what calls we're putting it in. Okay, so now we get on to the highlight of the meeting, superintendent's report.
First, our most happy Board Appreciation Month. We've celebrated this, this last few weeks. I want to say that we posted something, we got lots of love for all of you. And then I saw a number of our school districts follow a similar format to make sure their board members in turn were being recognized and appreciated as well. So once again, happy January and you're, and feeling appreciated. As we're heading into the new year, we've, we set out in the last two years to improve school safety, improve student achievement, and increase community engagement. In doing so, we've become more physically efficient, improved service to our 31 school districts and charter schools, improved morale, become much more clear about our vision and our plans for the future, and improved student achievement. I credit that to Team FCSS working very hard and very smart. I really wanted to share, I wanted to take a moment to share our public statement regarding ensuring a safe and supportive school environment for Fresno County students. I am very cognizant of my role and my responsibility. I've worked really hard to have the trust of our community and to serve our school districts as a resource. And I'm very sensitive to the, the time that our community is experiencing right now. So we have been working in concert with other educational leaders and certainly we know that we are an expert in students and children and education, but not in many, many others of aspects of, of, you know, the stress of our community at this time. So I'm so grateful to the partners that understand some of these aspects better than us. And they are stepping up in droves to be of support because in, at the core of all this are families worrying about their children. So in that said, all Fresno County students deserve safe, welcoming school environments that prioritize learning. Keeping children in school, promoting good mental health, free from fear and anxiety, and maximizing their opportunities for a bright future are fundamental. We understand that families have many questions about student privacy and school procedures. Here's what we want parents to know. The county superintendent's office maintains clear policies in accordance with California law regarding requests for student information and records for the purpose of immigration and work. Student information is protected by Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act. We all know that as FERPA. Any requests from law enforcement for student information require either a written parental consent, a court order, or a judicial subpoena. We want parents to help us maintain clear communication and support for their children. We ask parents to take a moment to review and update their children's emergency contact information. We ask parents to reach out to community organizations who are familiar with civil rights, immigration rights for additional support. And we encourage our parents to consider creating a family care plan by designated trusting, excuse me, trusted adults as authorized caregivers and share important documents and daily routines with them. Our commitment is to ensure every student thrive and feel safe in our schools. And as always, parents are encouraged to support their children's educational experience by partnering with their school leaders. Our school districts have their own local control and their own board policies. And we stand as a county office in support and help in interpreting. As you know, in our schools, sometimes our, our structures are, are legally compliant and not always user friendly. So we stand here ready to be of support to any of our educational partners for all children ages 0 to 22. ages 0 to 22. And I'm really grateful that we have a lot of engagement with our partners from IRE. So as I move on, feel free to use me and our team as a resource in this community as we, as we move forward. I'd also like to remind you that we have some amazing events coming up. Tomorrow's garden ceremony will be a little bit like today's fountain ceremony in that we're setting precedent and changing history a bit. I have been fortunate to have four minutes to welcome people to the garden ceremony. And because it's a, it's a value in our office to harness, amplify and honor student voice, I'm sharing four of my minutes, two of which will go to a student. So I'm very excited about having a representative from our African American Student Advisory to Superintendent be a part of our event tomorrow. I think I'm going to be very popular because all of those elected, all my peers will want to take a picture with Ms. Zoe. I'd also like to remind everyone that we've worked really hard and we're really excited about host or being the presentation for the Fresno County Trustees Association event on Tuesday night. And just a reminder, if you haven't already, the FS training is really good. It's a good reminder of why we chose to serve. And I've already taken it and I look forward to being able to underscore its importance in our presentation on Tuesday night. I will tell you that we are getting geared up. There are so many events and I'm not even going to dry list them in this time of day, but we did have an event that I'd really like your help with. And that is our Academic Decathlon Super Quiz. In years past, it was an opportunity for the community leaders and stewards to come be a part of the public super quiz experience. And we are going to work really hard to experience opportunity once again. We have a number of dignitaries that are very, very invested and devoted to our students. And so we're going to invite everyone to be there to really show that support for our students. And we'll make sure we give people credit by name and title. And we're just looking forward to the opportunity for the community to show the students that we, this is the Super Bowl of academics and it's a really good opportunity to sit almost knee to knee with students and affirm their hard work. And then finally, our African American Student Leadership Conference. If you have not had a chance to hear Robert Golden speak, he's a local boy and he's a gentleman and he, when he left our community to go be successful in life, he chose to come back and invest in education. He runs the Golden Charter Academy, he's a keynote speaker. Every time we can put somebody from Fresno who's grown up, been raised up by this village, has gone off to extraordinary success and who has come back, it's really just a sweeter message out for our students. I always like to lead groups. I got the chance today to speak to Leadership Fresno Class 39, although I reminded them that Class 19 was the best class.
I think it was three.
Well, I don't know, Marcy. Anyways, for those of you that are listening and here with us, if you are a member of Leadership Fresno, you, it's a tradition to say yours is the best class. So I agree though, it's pretty impressive. I'm not going to do the math.
I was two at the time.
Oh, that's awesome. Anyways, as with that group and here today, just some key takeaways. We at FCSS have a clear vision of what it takes to improve the lives of children and families. We know our responsibility to keep, to the public, to keep an eye on emerging issues and to watch and be transparent and fulfill the expectations of our public. And we recognize that our schools are the hubs of our community. We have 350 schools in Fresno County. Each and every one of them are respected and trusted by parents to take good care of their children and it is a privilege to do this work. So thank you so much for being able to do it with us.
Okay, thank you. I would like to echo the Academic Decathlon. If any of you've been to any of those on the award, the super quiz especially, the energy in there is like a high charged basketball game. Everybody goes, goes nup on it. It's, whoa, you didn't realize that. Anyway, future agenda items, any suggestions? Next regular board meeting will be held on February 18th, 2025, here at the County Office at 1101 Van S. And motion for adjournment.
So moved?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded? Roll call, please. Yes.
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 Meeting adjourned.
Don't forget about all the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King events that are happening this weekend as well. Friday, they'll be at City Hall. They're doing the candlelight visual this Friday, right after the ceremony. It's not on a separate day like a Saturday like it has been. So they're doing it while everyone's there, so that's.